Good evening, everyone. And let me hopefully reduce any echo on the recording. Good evening and welcome to the January 9th, 2024, Snowfield Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome, everybody, to the meeting. I would like to start the meeting by standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Gallagher, would you lead us in that pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. At the moment, we are a four-member board. We have our fifth member joining via remote at approximately 6:15. First on our schedule this evening is reviews, which may be taken out of order. We also have a number of requests for continuances, and to the extent that these are in the reviews, I'm going to try to handle those first before we get to a review that is here. As we go forward, please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify yourselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, just as a matter of instruction, with the Zoning Board of Appeals, should any member of the public wish to speak, we do generally take public comment at the time we are hearing each individual matter, rather than having public comment generally occur at the beginning of the meeting. When the chair asks if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand to indicate that you would. All right. I'm going to start with 219 Highland Ave. This is ZBA 2023-12. This is a review of the special permit to reinstate the convenience store in the existing pizza store. And this is a special permit that has already been granted, and we are here for review. Is anybody here to speak on this matter? Mercedes, can you confirm that no one online wishes to speak on this matter?
Nobody online.
Nobody. Okay. We have two attendees, and I don't see either of their hands raised. On this matter, we've received a communication from the permit holder, and I'm going to read this into the record. As per our conversation on Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, you expressed and asked to extend the review for another three to six months. Due that you are not ready to open and operate the convenience store yet, please reply and confirm that's correct. And the permit holder replied, yes, please and thank you. I appreciate that. So we have a request to continue for three to six months. Towards the end of the meeting tonight, we're going to discuss some revisions to the general standards by which we conduct reviews. And so, given that this is an applicant or a permit holder who has been before us on review a number of times, has not yet opened or attempted to conduct the use, and has an outstanding condition that they are supposed to submit a certified parking plan depicting the eight spaces that they are required to show. My suggestion is that we modify the decision to add a condition that the certificate of occupancy for the convenience store use would not issue until the parking plan has been submitted to the ZBA depicting eight dimensionally compliant parking spaces. And the ZBA has held that this condition has been satisfied. And then provide that the permit holder may request a review hearing before the ZBA once the certified parking plan has been submitted. So that is my suggestion. We could also consider scheduling a specific review date, but sooner than six months, I think, would be against what we're trying to achieve, which is fewer review hearings that serve no point. At this point, I'm going to ask if any board member has any comment on that proposal? None. Mr. McLaughlin, you have a comment or a preference between those options? Should we schedule a review hearing? Or should we allow the applicant to ask us for one?
I think in working towards minimizing these continued reviews, we could do that. And I like your recommendation with adding, I think we're going to call it eight, which would be that the permit not be issued until the parking plan is submitted?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay with that?
Okay. Then can I have a motion on this request for a continuance of the review?
I'll make the motion under ZBA 2023-12. I guess we're granting a continuance, right, to an unknown time?
Six months. Six months. So Mr. Byrne is indicating a definitive review date.
Okay. I mean, it's working towards the goal. It's a long enough timeframe. We seem to be doing a lot of reviews in two or three months, and then two or three months, and then two or three months. So I think we're down to a last bullet point.
Yes.
And six months gets us, you know, to summertime. And so I'll amend the request to include eight, not until parking plan is issued, will a special permit be issued, and then number nine would be a six-month review.
I believe that would be the July meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So that is continued until the July meeting. And I'm going to give a date certain for July.
9th.
9th. Thank you, Ms. Mata. So the 9th is the first to... No, that can't be possible. The 9th. Shouldn't question you. The next matter up for review is ZBA 2023-10, 21 Union Street. This is a review of the special permit under the zoning ordinance to reinstate and change the use of a vacant or abandoned building from a church to a single-family dwelling. Our last review date was on December 12th. The permit holder did not show on November 14th. The outstanding issue was a certified parking plan. At that time, an issue also arose on comment of the building commissioner on whether or not there is a requirement for this project to reach the energy stretch code and the insulation requirements under that code. After speaking with the building commissioner today, there's been a suggestion that that requirement be appealed to the state board. That is a process that would take four to six weeks. And his suggestion is that a further review be extended until at least that time to allow for that process. We also have a communication from the permit holder. Dear Zoning Board of Fitchburg, we aren't prepared with plans for the driveway yet. We really need one more month to get the plans together. One more month from now would be great. Thank you. And that is from Edwin Veliz, the property owner. I'm going to ask if there's anybody present here in person who would like to speak on this matter. Seeing none, I'm going to turn to online. If there is anyone online who would like to speak on this matter, please raise your Seeing none. Going back to board members, again, I would look to do a couple of things here, looking at our change in procedure. Number one, I would like to modify the decision to add a condition where the special permit would expire 24 months after the date of the vote granting the special permit unless the ZBA has approved completion of all conditions. And secondly, that the certificate of occupancy would be held pending certification by the ZBA for completion of all conditions. And then the other question would be whether to schedule this for review in some sooner period of time or to allow the applicant to request. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Question. You made a comment about the state board.
Yes.
Could you just explain that a little more in depth?
I would prefer that that be explained by the building commissioner. I believe this is... So it's the stretch energy code. So it's the Board of Building Code overseers, and I'm probably saying one of those words incorrectly. But it's the state board that oversees the administration of the building code, including the stretch energy code. And the issue where the permit holder did not open the walls, that's not the issue that implicated the insulation requirement. There was a change of use. And my understanding is the building commissioner would support an appeal to the state board on that basis, questioning whether this particular change in use should merit the upgrade to the energy code insulation requirement.
Okay. So instead of the building commissioner making that decision himself, he's deferring to a different authority for some clarification?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I go back to my question on scheduling a review or allowing the applicant to schedule the review. You're in favor of allowing the applicant? Other?
I am as well.
And you, sir? I would like to schedule a review for the 23rd month following. I want a review before this expires, at least on the schedule. And if the applicant would like to schedule a sooner review, they may by request to the board.
That's why you make the big bucks. You take this all out.
I do make some really big bucks here, yes. In case the public doesn't pick up on my note of sarcasm, we are a volunteer board. So, and we all enjoy the opportunity to volunteer. So I would like some review scheduled, but I don't want to put this on for a three-month review in case there are delays or other issues. I would allow the applicant to request a review when they believe they're complete. So.
So I've made note of your recommended conditions. I want to see if I get these right.
That would be wonderful.
Because, Ms. Mata, I don't write very fast. So we're going to add a condition that says the special permit will expire after 24 months unless?
All conditions have been approved by the ZBA as complete.
And the certificate of occupancy be submitted.
Yep. That would be another condition added.
And approved.
So we have condition number eight that says no occupancy permits to be issued until all conditions have been met and an inspection conducted by the board with review approved. I think that just needs to be modified to add that the applicant may schedule the review by request to the board.
We're going to strike 10, correct?
Correct.
And we'll replace 10 with a review on the 23rd month.
Yep. There is... So this was originally voted into approval on April 11th, 2023. And so we would be looking at the March meeting for 2025.
Is it 24 months from the written decision?
I propose that it be 24 months from the date of the vote.
Date of the vote. Okay.
It will be March 11th. March 11th. Thank you, Ms. Mata.
March 11th meeting. Okay.
So may I have a motion to that provision on the continuance?
Okay. I'll make that motion under ZBA 2023-10 for the property at 21 Unit Street for Lewis Colton with the changes in conditions as stated by the chair.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Moving forward. Yep. So I welcome Mr. Reynolds to our meeting. Thank you very much for zooming in so that we can be a five-person board. I am going to move to the next review on the agenda, and that is 1341 Rinj Road. And I believe the permit holder is here. Welcome to the meeting. I also believe that the permit holders' council is attending the meeting. That is Attorney Levine remotely. And although the program does not seem to be allowing me to do so right now, I would like him to be permitted to speak. Can you accomplish that? The option is not showing as available to me. Great. Attorney Levine, I think you've been upgraded. If you can let me know when you've been granted the ability to speak. Okay, Attorney Levine, it looks like you have been unmuted. Am I correct?
Thank you.
Great.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So before we begin, I would like to have all of the persons present for the permit holder just state their name and city of record.
Joanne Hamburg, McGurn, Lunenburg, Mass.
Thank you.
Arthur McGurn, Joanne Housman, Lunenburg, Mass.
Thank you.
Frank McPartland, engineer with Dillison Roy, Lunenburg, Mass.
Welcome, sir. And Attorney Levine, you are here with us and your city of practice.
Acton, Massachusetts.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to proceed, Attorney Levine, or would you like to allow your client to proceed to present?
I think it would be more efficient for my client and Mr. McPartland to proceed first, Madam Chairman.
You're welcome to... Let me know if you want to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us again. So we have, to the best of our ability, finished everything that was requested to be done by December 31st. Frank from Dillison Roy has submitted a letter to verify that we've completed all the tasks that were requested of us. We did find an acceptable source, I believe, for the landscape or conservation easement, which is the Fitchburg Parks Department, and they've agreed to accept it. And as you know, it's been pushed off, not because of ours, but so that everybody could review it and make sure that it was acceptable.
I think the city council, because it's an interest general property, also has to approve the holding of the easement. So that is a process where it gets referred from city council down to the city property committee. The city property committee reviews it and makes a recommendation, and the city council eventually votes on it. I did speak to Councilor Craig in the chair of the city property committee just to see what they thought the timeline would be. And the response was they believe that the first meeting can be scheduled within about two weeks. And I think there's going to be at least a six-month time period between the first meeting. I didn't say six months. I meant to say six weeks.
I was going to say what?
Sorry about that. I probably just freaked everybody out. Six weeks.
Even six weeks. It's like I've been...
So, yeah. So I could foresee six weeks easily happening before that's an approved item before the city council, obviously always subject to discussion and actual vote by the city council. I have reviewed the proposed easement, and I know there had been some differences back and forth between versions. And I did ask the city solicitor just to forward what had been submitted to the city council. And I would just let anybody know who's interested in participating in that process. The city property committee is a public process. If anybody would like to make a comment about the contents or form of the easement, or whether or not it's appropriate for the city to hold it, you're welcome to do so through that process. And I'm going to make one comment here that I will likely make as well to the city property committee. In the proposed easement, there is a paragraph five. And I don't think that's... Yeah, there's no article. So it's paragraph five on page two that allows modification or amendment of the easement only if all parties and interests agree. My comment in general is that if this was to be held by any other entity but a city government entity, I would not think it appropriate. But because, you know, we engage in representative government here, I always think it's questionable to make unchangeable something that is an expression of the will of people. And I could foresee that at some point in time in 50 years, the city's interests may be different regarding the holding of the easement, or that there may be some small modification that is beneficial to make sure enforcement happens. But there would be no modification of the easement without the city's consent. And I interpret that to be Parks Commission and city council and the mayor, because it would have to be a modification of that property interest, that easement. That's a lot of representative entities to say we can never change this. I know that there are differing opinions on this, and I would encourage anybody who has a differing opinion to express that to the city property committee. And that includes my board members, who all know that I welcome differing opinions. In addition to that, there would have to be a modification of the special permit or a change in the zoning ordinance to build any more units at this point. So would also have to come back to the ZBA. So that is my summation. And given that the condition that was an issue at the last hearing, although we put in our decision that it had to be completed by this hearing, I take the applicant's actions and the fact that it does have to go through this mandatory city process to be approved, I take that as a good faith working towards completion of that condition. At the last meeting, we made a recommendation, because this board cannot directly fine for zoning violations, it can only recommend... Recommendation that the building commissioner issue a weekly fine until compliance was achieved. I have spoken to the building commissioner on this, who has not yet issued the fine, about the timing of the response to that decision. And his statement was that the applicant called the next day, and by the Tuesday following, the week following the meeting, this issue and this request was before the Parks Commission. I believe that the fine should be mitigated, and I would recommend that one week's fine or $300, again, which is a recommendation to the building commissioner, be imposed on the applicant. But that so long as this process continues to completion, that no further fines for violation of that condition be assessed at this time. In addition, we have a report from Dillison Roy on the conditions that were to be completed by December 31st. And what I'd like to do... I do want to return to the easement issue, because I do want to ensure that this is completed. So I want to have a mechanism for doing that. But I'd like to review from Dillison Roy the completion of the December 31st conditions, if you would, sir.
Yes. So the... And again, Frank McPartland from Dillison Roy. The specific conditions that were to be completed by December 31st, 2023, were conditions item 11I through 11R. 11I was the removal of existing stockpiled excess material, so long as the same does not constitute earth removal as defined in the city ordinance, but no loam may be removed from the property at this time. All stockpiled material has either been placed on site or removed, with the exception of one loam stockpile and one common fill stockpile, both of which will be used to fine-grade the remaining lots on construction. These stockpiles have been stabilized with erosion control barrier for the winter season. And please stop me if any of this needs question or feedback.
So there is still stockpiled material there, but it's not anticipated to be removed from the site?
Correct. It's going to be spread around the remaining five pads?
Well...
Or the remaining...
Only the two that have loom on them.
Okay.
When we move the loom, we're going to put that over there. So, yes.
Item 11J, all rock hammering on site shall be completed. That... All rock hammering on site is complete. The last item that required hammering was the installation of some fence posts, and that is all done. And I believe you were in the process of selling the rock hammer or getting it off site?
Not the hammer.
Not the hammer. No.
The screener.
Screener.
That's okay.
Wrong item.
Screener's been sold, and that's no longer on site.
Some of the equipment is starting to...
And we've got another... We have an 892 for sale.
So not being familiar with what an 892 is...
Oh, it's an excavator. Sorry. Sorry. It's an excavator.
Is there... So am I to understand the rock crushing machine is gone?
There is no rock crusher on site. Yes.
All right.
The only thing we have is the hammer, but they, you know...
But you don't need to use it any further.
It is not in operation on site, and there's no plan to use it.
So if there is any report from any abutter or other person that there is rock hammering going on, obviously, you know, I would take that to be a violation of the conditions going forward. Okay. Go ahead, please.
Item 11K, all processing of excess material, which is limited to screening, to be completed. And all processing of that material is complete.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 11L, rough grading of the roads and installation of utilities and drainage in the road according to Dillison Roy Plan dated August 13th, 2023. Rough grading of the road and installation of the utilities and drainage in the road is complete. So the road is... So the, the, the road is within, within about a foot to 12, a foot to 18 inches of finished grade, which is the definition of rough grading.
Have the, all of the inspections on that work been completed? That are due at this point?
Yes.
Um, and really, I'm specifically talking about the road, rough grading and installation of the utilities?
All the util, the, um, utilities, the, uh, sore mains, the water mains, everything's been tested, and the city of Fitchburg's been out there.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, is, is Ryan or, um?
So I do not, um, see in our Zoom meeting, um, unfortunately, anyone directly from the city. If that changes, um, I will let you know.
And, um, to, to continue my comment, uh, the remain, the remaining grading within the roadway limits will, uh, consist of fine grading and base course paving and top course paving, which will be complete, complete prior to the July 1st, 2024 milestone.
Okay.
So it's all the, so just, just the finish work.
Okay.
Um, item 11M, paving of the driveway to existing homes. Uh, the base course paving of the driveways to all existing homes is complete as of the date of this letter.
Thank you.
Item 11N, uh, regrading of all home sites, including rough grading on new sites on the premises. Um, regrading of all existing home sites is complete, and rough grading of all the new home sites is complete.
Okay.
Item 11O, any erosion controls required to prevent further erosion of the existing slopes to be placed as necessary, and any degrading ledge shall be evaluated by a design professional and stabilized in accordance with their recommendations. Um, erosion controls are in place, and, um, should they become necessary, the contractor has access to additional controls, uh, to be, um, installed as needed. Um, the applicant, uh, has had the existing ledge evaluated by an industrial seismologist, uh, geologist, and in, uh, their opinion, no further measures are required to stabilize existing ledge faces. A copy of that, that, those findings were provided to the board in November of 2023.
Okay.
Uh, item 11P, outside perimeter of the project area to be regraded, loomed, and seeded, preferably in the style of the natural rural character of the area prior to construction. Um, regrading, loaming, and seeding of the outside perimeter of the project area is complete, and that'll obviously be touched up as, as needed, um, in further grow, growing seasons.
I would anticipate there's gonna be some reseeding necessary.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and.
I just wanted to meet the conditions, so.
Right, right.
Um, item 11Q, operations and maintenance plan of the stormwater drain system to be filed with DPW and to be updated at least every three years. Um, the operations and maintenance plan was prepared by Dillison Roy and was forwarded to the city on December 1st of 2023.
Do I understand that there were some, uh, questions and issues from DPW on that plan that needed to be resolved?
Uh, not that have been communicated to me specifically to, on, on the O and M plan, but I, I can reach out to them to, to, uh, address anything.
Right, but the plan has been submitted at any rate?
The plan was submitted, yes.
Okay.
Um, item 11R, uh, the applicant shall be subject to a daily fine of $300 if all of the above items are not complete by December 31st, 2023, and that, that was an acknowledgement of that, that condition.
Okay. Thank you for reviewing the conditions, I appreciate that. Um, I'm going to go to public comment before I go to board comment. Um, is there any member of the public who is here in person who would like to make a comment or ask a question on this review? Um, either of the board or the applicant, or the permit holder?
Um, attorney, I think most of my comments pertaining to the easement, so I think I understood you right. They can go to the Parks Commission, am I right? Okay.
Okay. So I'm just gonna note for the record, that was a, a question asked by Mary Ellen Christensen, um, of Fitchburg, Massachusetts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any, uh, you're welcome, sir, to approach the podium. Please state your name and city of, of record, and, um, if you would, please keep your comments concise and on point. Thank you, sir, and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Hal Malanson, 13 Bennett Road. About the, the fines. You, the board, zoning board of appeals, came up with a $300 a day fine.
So, uh, the, it, it was voted as a $300 a week fine, you, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, $300 a week.
Yep.
And, um, I'm, I'm sorry about that, I, I misspoke.
It's okay.
And then, a month later, out of the goodness of James Reynolds' heart, he decided that it should be $300 a week, and you all voted on that. What's the motivation? It, it smells fishy.
I, I would simply say to you, sir, that, um, this is not the result of some kind of backhanded conversation. The goal of this board is compliance and completion of the project. Fines are a tool to be rarely used, um, and only as a means to gain compliance from an applicant or a permit holder who is otherwise recalcitrant. I believe at the November meeting, which was the meeting about the issue with the easement, um, taking place, I had come to the meeting proposing a $300 a day fine because of the actions of the permit holder. What was voted on, given the permit holder's concession to fix the problem, and not to pursue, and a conservation easement to be held by the homeowners association. But the applicant's behavior in agreeing to fix the problem led the board to vote to a $300 a week fine. And again, that is a recommendation to the building commissioner for the fine to occur. The week following, the week following that meeting, the permit holder approached and submitted to the Board of Park Commissioners, the conservation easement now in discussion. So I think there was definitely a week of non-compliance. But where the city property committee process takes so long to complete, I also don't think that it's appropriate to fine in a continuing manner, as long as that process is proceeding without delay on the part of the permit holder.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there any other person present in person who would like to make a comment or ask a Welcome, sir, please approach the podium, state your name and your city of residence.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Douglas Caves, and I am in a butter at 1345 Rint Road. So, I think at this point I have some questions about process and expectations. There is no natural, uh, screening between my yard and the number of houses that loom over me. So my life has changed drastically.
Mm-hmm.
When I look out the window now, to gaze at the trees or the sunrise, now I see I hope that there will be some screening that will mitigate that, okay? Uh, in, in a, um, four-season, um, approach, rather than, uh, it was, you know, trees that lose their leaves, deciduous trees, conifer, conifers would be.
Evergreen.
And a picket fence, no. So, the other question I have is just about finishing, uh, the, I think they call it the riprap, the, the plastic wrap that goes at the bottom, is still there, but it's, I, I would assume it's been mowed already once, so it must be time to remove that, okay? It's kind of unsightly. And then I, I, and I also would like to ask when that, uh, the rest of the dike that's not covered over with loam will be completed, or if it will be completed. If, 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 does that, am I, am I explaining what I'm asking? There's, there's a section of the dike that hasn't been covered with loam, it's just boulders. And I can see that out my window whenever I gaze at the sunrise, so I'm just wondering, is that, will that be addressed? Or, that's all, so those, those are my questions.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna ask, um, uh, so the questions were on screening, um, on mowing the riprap and, uh, completion of the loaming on the dike. And if the applicant has an answer, please provide.
So the, the plastic he's talking about is the siltation fence that can't be taken down until the order of conditions have been met for the conservation, which we are nearly complete, and you can't take that down, sir, until it's fully vegetated the entire parcel. So that is a, that is a condition of, um, our conservation commission. Secondly, the, the spillway, the area that he's talking about is unloamed, that is the spillway for the forbade, uh, retention pond. So that has to remain as riprap, that is part of the overall design of a retention pond and detention pond.
How is it maintained? Um, he spoke of mowing it, of there being overgrowth in the riprap.
It's, it is, it is riprap. So what happens is when you're, if you get, if you get, that system gets taxed. What I mean by taxed, if you, you have a deluge of rain, that water comes up to a certain level, and then is spilt out as a precaution, so you're not overloading the, the backup of the systems.
Mm-hmm.
So that has to have an, an egress path on the way out, and that is made of riprap stone, that's how it typically is done in the industry. That is very standard practice. In fact, Dillison Roy probably can even speak to that.
But is there overgrowth within the stone that is arising within the trap rock?
No. He's, he's, he wants the, he's thinking that it's unfinished, is the riprap he's seen, I believe, is the riprap, right, the riprap stone?
So that's the finished version?
You know, actually, I thought the plastic is the rap, but it's the stone.
Yeah.
So that, that's my question, is, is, you know, why is that, why does it appear that way? If that's by design, then what do I know?
It is, uh, apart from Dill, Dillison Roy, that, that riprap is a, um, an erosion control method on the spillway itself, so that, um, that, so that when, if the basin is overwhelmed and needs to discharge, it'll, that's, that's the low, low, low point, and that riprap was designed by the original engineer to allow the, uh, the water to leave the basin and on the loss.
And then, um, go ahead, sir.
In years to come, what will happen when things start growing through that riprap?
So, um, part of what I had to submit for this was in stormwater operations and maintenance plan. Um, one of the main, maintenance items is vegetation maintenance at the basin. So, um, not, so the basin will have to be mowed, uh, the, the applicant will need to ensure that there is no woody vegetation growing up in the berm itself, which can damage it, and that riprap will need to be hand-maintained of any vegetation.
And who's responsible for that?
And that, that, that responsibility is outlined in the stormwater plan that has been submitted to the city. So, once, um, once, once construction is complete, the applicant is obligated to submit reports to, to the city under that, that O and M plan. Thank you.
Is that through the DPW, or is that through the, um, conservation commission?
I've submitted it to both. Um, I believe the conditions were that it went through the DPW, but, um, I, I've provided that to multiple boards.
Okay. Maybe that was, um, one of the issues that needed clarification, what would be the control entity, or the supervising entity? Okay. And then lastly, on the request for any screening, is there any planned for vegetative screening, um, in between the two properties?
Your, the.
We have the retaining wall.
The submitted plan does call out screening. The, the, the originally approved plan prepared by Whitman and Bigum, um, calls for screening at, at the toe of the, of the basin slope.
Is there a specification as to the trees or species?
It's called out as, um, 10 arbivites, 20 feet on center.
Okay.
And that's what was, that was, that's what the original approval was.
What would you anticipate, um, to be a completion time for installation of those arbivites?
Until next spring sometime, yeah. I mean, hopefully by the, um, was it the, by November, we'll have everything in place and finished. I hope that the whole project completed.
Yeah.
By our date that you've given us, like you said, we do still need to build the recreation building, and, um, I'm looking to start getting permits for my homes so that we can get the concrete slabs in. I'm gonna try to do as much as I can over the winter to try to complete the project as fast as possible.
Done, done, again, of the year.
So I'm hoping that after tonight, we can start obtaining our permits and try to move forward as best we can with the weather conditions, you know, there's only, sometimes there's limitations.
So the next deadline that's approaching is completion, um, a, a date of July 1st for the home pads and the lateral connections and the electrical utilities and the road pavement, as well as the recreation building. Um, it's 10 arbivites, do you think that, that would be an appropriate, uh, deadline for installation of 10 arbivites? I mean, there's no work over there that would interfere.
No, I would think we can get those in as long as, yeah, I would think by, I don't know when they come available. You know what?
There are arbivites, they're readily available.
As long as they're available and we can grab them, yes, we can get them in, that's not an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Um, is there anyone else present who would like to approach and speak?
It's, uh.
Okay.
Sorry, I think you may have answered this question already.
And again, name and, name of residence again.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, Mary Ellen Mara Christian, 71 Bennett Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
I know on number P, you guys answered, um, that it's been regraded and loomed and seeded up there, so that's great. Did you ask if there were gonna be trees, because it does state, and I realize you're just trying to finish and complete this, I get that, but it also shows how in style of the natural rural character of the area prior to construction, so I just didn't know, will there be some kind of trees up that end to, to, to do what this states in the natural rural character of the area prior to construction? That's my question.
You're welcome to respond.
We do plan on putting in some trees.
Okay.
Honestly, I think it's gonna be up to the holder of the easement, is gonna be the person who's dead dictating whether trees are being planted, because.
Okay.
Because of the terms of the easement.
Can I make that comment at the Parks Commission? Maybe that's where it's appropriate?
You can.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think that's a good place for that to happen.
Okay.
Um, the, the, and, and it's the city property committee that will next be hearing the easement issue, city property committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and councillor Craig in is the chair of that committee, so I think she would be a good person to contact to make sure you know when it's scheduled.
Right.
Um, and I, they need a good understanding of how this easement is gonna be, work and be administered, so I certainly think that's a good issue to raise with them.
All right, good enough, thank you. Thank you.
Any other person here, um, live, who would like to make a comment on this review? And now I'm going to go, seeing none here, to if anyone online would like to make a comment, please raise your hand.
What about the attorney?
The attorney has not raised his hand. Attorney Levine, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Uh, no, the only thing I would, um, point out to the board, that the area hasn't been mentioned, uh, the easement area has been increased substantially. Uh, Frank, maybe you can give the actual dimensions from the original plan to what is now encompassed?
Um, yes, Lou, um, I don't have the, the original plan in, in front of me, but the current easement area is, uh, 7.8 acres. So the, I, I think the original plan was, was right around two acres, and now the easement encompasses almost eight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Levine.
And, um, I would also like to say that a lot of that area is, um, is, is existing established vegetation.
All right, I'm gonna ask if any board members have questions for the permit holder, Mr. Byrne?
No.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
I do not, thank you, Christine.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You must feel good that you have really moved the dial on this project in a short period of time. I know it's not what your plan was, but I bet at this point.
We just wanna finish it, you know?
Yeah.
And I'm doing everything possible, I was before, it's just, it's time, but we're getting there.
I think everybody appreciates your. I think everybody appreciates your due diligence and, you know, really accelerating it. Just a couple of questions. Rural residential, when will all the, I'll call them the yellow trucks, kind of disappear? You know, it sounds like you've owned a few and you're selling them.
Yeah, slowly.
Will it kind of go back to, there won't be any construction equipment on site?
On, what is it, November 31st, when my permit is done? Once we're done, I mean, the next thing's going to be the community building. I can't give you an exact date, but I am slowly selling off the equipment that I do own.
Okay.
And it would be off-site by the November milestone?
Oh, yeah. Everything will be, by the time we finish, everything will be off-site.
The property will not be a construction staging yard any longer than it needs to be.
Yeah. I'm just, again, looking at that kind of closure period where the folks that live in the park, in the abutters, say, okay, it's, this is, we've reached, attained our dream.
Yeah. I mean, just to try to keep it not looking like a construction site instead of so many orange cones. I've got arbivites in buckets.
Yeah.
Instead to try to make it look a little more homey and presentable and not so much as a construction site, so.
And looking at the milestones, much of the construction equipment would probably be gone by the July deadline of when it needs to be final paved.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. The only other comment, it's going to kind of be a comment towards you and hopefully the board will talk about it. And again, it's, because this is kind of a unique dynamic where it's rural residential, right? It's not residential CRB. And I know you're familiar with all the districts. Is that, you know, in a typical fashion, the abutters, okay, may see a house built next to them, right? And you can do that as a matter of right. This is a little different where they're looking at multiple units, all kind of lined up. So what would kind of your feedback be as to what can we do better so that these folks have what they moved there for, which was more of a rural residential, you know, landscape? I know there was some talk about kind of restoring, and I don't have all the details, restoring some of that area to a natural state, right? In a natural state, to me, when you go up in that area is, I can't really see my neighbor. So I'm just, I guess, a little concerned that 10 arbivites, 20 feet on center, Joe and I are, you know, probably pretty close to 10 feet apart. I'm still going to see all these units, you know? Can we, can we give them some privacy?
I guess we'd have to maybe do a site walk to see exactly what you're, because I think you're talking two different areas. You know, that's, that's my, you know? So I think maybe at a later date in the summer or something, or you guys, we could do a site visit and talk. Or maybe after we get the 20 arbivites in, we could revisit it. I'm not opposed, I'm not trying to cause issues with the neighbors. I want everybody to be happy. I mean, you know...
I think we're this close, right?
Yeah. I mean, I've really, I hope that I've shown that I've worked hard to make this happen. I've not taken anything you guys have said lightly. I want this to be a beautiful community for my residents and for the neighbors.
Yeah. You know, as some of the abutters mentioned, you know, in rural residential, you know, 20 arbivite soldiers all lined up in a perfect row isn't rural residential.
We can mix them up.
It's screening, you know, so. But anyway, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Reynolds, would you like to make a comment or ask any questions of the applicant? So, Mr. Reynolds, if you're trying to make a comment, I still see that you are muted. Could you unmute your microphone? Can you unmute his microphone?
How's this now?
There we go. Thank you. All right, Mr. Reynolds, now we can hear you.
There was a long wait for no comment. Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing a little levity to the evening. All right. So what I am going to do, I'm going to make my comment. I just want to say that when this plan was implemented, I did realize that it was very challenging to me. It just became necessary in the, in light of all of the history of this case. And I think that having that impetus to complete it is what helped move all of the parties involved to do so. But that being said, I do appreciate the reversal. I would note that we have a release from the Homeowners Association stating that they do not have any claim on this conservation easement. So I appreciate that issue being covered as well. And the cessation in jackhammering or any processing on the site, I think, is going to be a blessing both for the residents of the community and for the abutters around that community. So I'm very glad to see that the items were completed. And I look forward to all our future reviews being equally complimentary on your efforts and your completion.
Thank you.
As I said, I do want to make sure that that easement goes through and gets completed or that if for some reason the city declines to hold it, that it comes back to us. There is...
Conservation wants it.
Yeah. I just want some entity to hold it.
I'm sure we can find somebody we need it to.
So we have condition number 12 on the existing decision that says no building permits for any additional manufactured units to be installed on cement pads shall issue until those December 31st items have been completed. And I think that the December, I did just check with the building commissioner as to his opinion. It was his opinion as well that they had been completed. So I think that the building permit hold at this point has been satisfied and should be released.
Thank you.
And we will take a vote on that at this point at this meeting. But as far as ensuring that the easement does continue and gets completed within a short period of time, as short as the city process will allow, this is my proposal. Like other reviews before us, we've talked about holding the certificate of occupancy, which would allow you to commence building the pads, commence installation on the pads, but not get that certificate of occupancy before signing. Because you've made such good progress, I don't want to do that for all of them. I would like to do it for some of them. So my thought is that we hold the final three and allow for certificates of occupancy to go forward. And that we modify the condition regarding the conservation easement as follows. Permit holder shall seek approval of the proposed conservation easement in form substantially the same as submitted to the city council at its January 4th, 2024 meeting expeditiously. And shall submit and record the same once approved and executed by the city. But in all cases, on or before February 27th, 2024. We can discuss the date. We can discuss the date. If the city or the permit holder fails to approve and execute the proposed easement in substantially the same form or the permit holder fails to record the executed easement, on or before the date, the permit holder must submit a proposed alternative conservation easement for review to the Building Department and the Board, meeting the requirements of condition 19, and execute and record the same. And then we need a date. And then that a certain number of the certificates of occupancy would not issue until this condition has been completed. So what I'm looking for is just a way to make sure we all stay on track. And I'm willing to hear comment from you on that.
I would just ask that if for some reason the Parks Commission didn't, for some reason they didn't end up being the holder, that I would be allotted time to find a replacement? Because, I mean, you know, it just takes a little bit of time. And I would also ask if it would be possible to allow the permits for the five on the left and just hold the last two on the right? So that I could complete one side of the street and finish getting all the utilities in the ground?
Okay. So it's the certificate of occupancy and the, so the, getting the utilities in the ground is not something that would be stopped?
I understand, I understand. But I'd like to get those five homes under agreement. I already have three that are under agreement. And I have a couple of the people that are interested in those lots. And some of them are, need to do things quicker than others. So I ask that if it would be possible to just, the two on the right? So we have a specific which two? And then those two would be done last?
All right. I'm going, I'm going to go to board comment on this as well, but I'd just like to check and see if any member of the public would like to... I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Attorney Levine, you're welcome to speak for a moment on this.
Yeah, just on the general discussion on the amount of time. And I think you may be more knowledgeable, Madam Chairman, than myself. But I don't think that the end of February is going to be a sufficient amount of time to get through the Property Committee and/or the city council. So I would, again, leave it up to discretion. But I think the end of March might be a more reasonable amount of time, given the Property Committee and city council's, you know, schedule and when they may attend to that. Thereafter, you know, I have some ideas if that doesn't happen and we can come back to, we can either accomplish them or come back to the ZBA and explain what they are and that it may take a bit of time to accomplish them, but they can be accomplished. So I would just add for another 60-day period, if in fact the city doesn't accept it by that first period, which I would suggest to be somewhere on or about the end of March. Otherwise, I have no, I have no disagreement with what you propose.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Levine. I take the comment on the time to allowance. I debate between February and March as well. I, I want to see the applicant back if this process does not resolve sooner than 60 days after March 31st.
We're getting out of the country, the end of February.
At the end of February.
We leave on the 22nd.
22nd, return the 29th.
So.
28th.
Is there any other member of the public who has a comment on this particular issue, the hold of occupancy permits and the timing of the time allotted for resolution of the easement? If you do, please approach the podium so everybody can hear. And sorry to make you repeat your name.
I have a comment. Marielle Amara, Christian, 71 Bennett Road. I guess I'm just not, I'm not following it. Could you just explain it so...
Certainly. So we have building purpose permits, which are to start constructive work. And then there are certificates of occupancy, which are certificates that the work has been completed, which would allow a home to be sold and somebody move in.
Someone can move in, right?
And so they've satisfied the conditions for which we were holding the building permits on the seven additional units. I want to make sure this easement process is actually completed within a good period of time, but I know that the city does take some time to do that. And that the city may choose not to accept holding the easement, in which case there's going to need to be another, another resolution on this. So the proposal is to hold some of those certificates of occupancy, but not all of them. I've proposed hold three. The permit holder has stated she would prefer to hold two. And that we hold, and this condition is to be satisfied by, I think at this point, we're at the end of March of this year, or they're going to come back to us. And we're going to need to have another resolution. But until the easement issue is finally resolved and recorded, some of those certificates of occupancy would not issue. That means that the permit holder would not be able or should not be able to sell the units because who would finance a unit that you can't live in?
Right. Okay. I follow. I agree with that. Okay. I agree with your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any comments, Mr. Byrne, on that proposal?
Well thought out, very much.
Mr. Gallagher?
I'm all set. Thank you. Well thought out, Christine.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Chair, as you had mentioned, there's been tremendous progress. So I'd be okay with going with five. But I would like to add a condition that, you know, springtime, we have a site visit with the abutter and just be able to walk and that the board reserves the right to add some conditions with regards to screening that will just bring a final resolution to the abutters. Not looking to add any, you know, I'm sure there might be a little expense, not looking to do, to cause any, you know, issues or delays. But again, just want to kind of bring final closure to this. But as long as everybody's kind of okay with it, let's, I think everything's been well thought out.
Okay. And Mr. Reynolds, unless you unmute yourself, do you have a comment or a question?
No comment. I like where the conversation is going and support what the board has discussed.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So then, this is what I'm going to propose. I had read out an added condition. The modifications would be that the permit holder is to submit and record the same once approved and executed by the city, but in all cases, on or before March 31st, 2024. And that if the city or the permit holder fails to approve and execute the proposed easement in substantially the same form or the permit holder fails to record the executed easement on or before March 31st, 2024, the permit holder must submit a proposed alternative conservation easement for review to the Building Department and the Board, meeting the requirements of condition 19, on or before May 1st, 2024, with the review being scheduled for May 20th, 2024?
Madam Chairman?
Just let me finish before I allow you to. And then, again, no certificate of occupancy for... I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong date. May 14th. No certificate of occupancy for the two additional units on the left?
Right side.
On the right.
Thank you.
Shall issued until this condition has been satisfied. Attorney Levine, please proceed.
Just only because I had to issue another matter. March 31st is East of Sunday. I wouldn't have known that, but I continued something else to March 31st and somebody pointed it out to me. So can we just make it April 1st?
Yes. Not a problem.
I didn't know that. Somebody else told me I was wrong yesterday.
I'm just writing down the things that I said so that we can remember them. All right. So that's the proposed additional condition. I agree that a... I agree that a site visit would be appropriate, so I think a site visit during the month of April to be scheduled by the permit holder through the Building Department, by the board members.
To discuss
To discuss.
Screening for the abutters.
I would recommend the end of April. Let the natural vegetation grow in the spring season, because right now we're in the, you know, we don't get to see what the weeds and such are doing.
I think within the, within the month of April is fine. And then we can, you're welcome to schedule it at the end if you think that's appropriate, depending on how the weather for all of us proceeds this year. And then I would like there to be a finding that no further fines beyond the initial $300 assessment should be assessed to the permit holder for violation of the conditions so long as she continues expeditiously to seek approval, execution, and recording of the conservation easement and all other conditions of the special permit.
Madam Chair, do you need a motion on that?
I would like a motion on that.
Here's the motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Reynolds, you are in vote.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. All right, so the review is continued until May 14th, 2024. Again, the City Property Committee, approval of the conservation easement is ongoing. Anyone interested in participating, participating in that should attend the meetings of the City Property Committee and perhaps subsequently the City Council.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't believe I made a vote to continue.
Would you like to cast your vote?
Vote for the finding.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Because I still have some comments regarding.
That's the problem with not restating the motion.
The easement.
Okay. So let's retake that as a motion on the finding. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Aye, Mr., and thank you. So that's unanimous. And then let's take a motion on the continuance and modification of the special permit.
Okay. Before we do, I have a comment about the easement.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
I think everybody's done some great work on this and I think we're pretty close to closure on it. I, I only have one comment, and that is, I just want to be sure that whatever is put in place, I know that we had a condition that no more units will be built, and I know that the, there needs to be some language so things can be modified in the future way beyond when we're all here.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that there isn't a methodology that any more dwelling units be built on the property. I don't really have any concern on how we protect that or achieve it, but again, we've put a dense neighborhood in a rural residential area. We've all worked hard towards closure. I just want to make sure that one of the conditions that the board seemed to be pretty vocal on is protected and, as well as for the neighborhood.
Okay.
And that's, that's it. Just, so I don't know how we get there, but.
I, I, I will give you the opinion that because this easement can be modified or terminated by the two parties holding it, one of which is the city.
No.
If that happens and a future Board of Zoning Appeals revises the special permit as issued after notice and hearing and an opportunity for any interested party to object, under the current language, that remains possible. And if there should be a modification on that, then I think addressing the comment to the City Property Committee before the easement is finalized would be appropriate. And where, you know, the City Council is our most representative form of government, I, I kind of think that issue should be discussed by them, so. All right. Are we ready now to proceed?
So again, just one member of the board. We all voted towards these conditions and maybe like to hear some feedback from some of the other members, you know?
So any other member have any feedback?
I'm happy with what we've done.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
No, I'm satisfied.
Mr. Reynolds, any feedback?
Not at this point.
I, I share your concern that a future board and a future representative government will not have the same concern for the inviolate nature of what we're doing. You know, that goals of housing might be more important to them than conservation of open space. I just don't think it's, it's appropriate to restrict the future that, that completely. There's this thought that we're a living government, and we're getting a little off-base here, but there's this thought that we're a living government and it's somewhat inappropriate for us to encumber the future with the priorities that we have. And I think we're always trying to seek the balance between that. But I'm certainly, I, I think this conversation should be continued before that committee, but I would, I'd just remind you that the ZBA would have to change the special permit for that to happen as well. So. Without any other further comment, I look for a motion on the continuance and the modification of the conditions.
And we're continuing until when, Madam Chair?
That would be May 14th, 2024.
Okay. I'll make that motion under ZBA 2023-08 for the continuance on May 14th, 2024, with the added and amended conditions that were discussed by the Chair and the Board.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
That is unanimous, so we are continued until May 14th. Thank you, everyone, for appearing and participating. We appreciate all of your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Reynolds, that is the matter that I, I truly wanted you present for so that we would be a five-person board.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. With your allowance, I, I would like to leave the meeting. I just have some other items I have to deal with.
Very good. All right. Thank you for attending. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
The next matter we're going to call is ZBA 2023-02. This is 479 Water Street. It's a review of the special permit to reinstate a vacant or abandoned building, converting it from one non-conforming use to another less detrimental non-conforming use as a duplex. Is anyone in the audience present to speak on that application? I'm just going to note that we had a communication from the permit holder. Good morning, Mercedes. I just wanted to let you know that I won't be able to attend the board meeting tonight due to the time that I work, that I work at the hospital. Thank you. So we do not expect the permit holder. This was last reviewed at the November 14th meeting. There was no parking plan designating snow storage. There was a condition on a fence to be placed that was added at the meeting. We have existing an 18-month completion provision. We are also holding a $5,000 completion deposit. And one of the issues that had come up was, again, the stretch energy code and the insulation requirements on this property that had a bit derailed the permit holder. I also know that we had some issues with whether or not the conditions were properly Is there any person in the virtual audience who is here to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to go to board comment on a continuance. And again, I look, I, I think we should look at this as a modification where we hold the certificate of occupancy. We establish a time limit for expiration of the special permit. And we allow the permit holder to request a review. I will say that in, in this particular case, we are holding a $5,000 completion deposit. So it may not be that incumbent upon us to have the certificate of occupancy held as well that has an 18-month provision on it, so. Mr. Byrne, any comments on how we should handle this?
No, I really haven't given it that much thought, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gallagher, any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. I'm wondering how the inspections are going from the city in terms of where they, where they are in the process.
There was a December the 13th inspection. That inspection passed, and I believe that was on the rough work. I should be able to tell you that commentarily. So there was a plumbing permit and a gas permit issued on September 21st, a road opening permit on October the 18th, and a trench permit to accompany it. The building permit is active. If I look at the inspections, the insulation inspection has passed.
Go ahead.
The footings inspection has passed. The rough inspection has passed. The site inspection has passed. And the last inspection was completed on December 13th.
Good. Thank you, Madam Chair. That was helpful.
See that comment from the, from Inspector there?
Okay.
So you are there. If you go to the inspections. You're outside over there. Yeah. Go down.
December 13th.
So please you click on the inspection section?
Yep.
Okay. So I feel like he put that comment there. I don't want. That wasn't, yeah.
Yep. So there's a comment by Inspector Sullivan that all rough inspections have passed as well as insulation. Final inspections will be next.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin, any questions or comments on how we should handle this particular case?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I would like to see the end of this, at the end of this, I'd like to see that we change the last condition so that before they can get a certificate of occupancy, they will schedule a review. So we don't keep chasing these people that have to chase us.
Okay. if we add a condition, would be Condition 14. the condition would be that no certificate of occupancy shall issue until the Zoning Board of Appeals has found that all conditions of the special permit have been satisfied. Permit holder may request a review hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'm going to change that to a must. Must request.
Must request a review hearing before the ZBA for approval of the conditions as completed, as well as submission of the certified parking plan with snow storage designated. And then the second modification would be a termination provision. Unless this review has been approved and/or the conditions precedent to the certificate of occupancy have been deemed completed by the ZBA, within 24 months after the date of the vote granting this special permit, this special permit shall expire and a new application for special permit shall be required for this use. And then with those conditions, we would not schedule a next review date, so so any review date would be struck. Discussion on that proposal?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So can I have a motion on those two proposed modifications to the special permit? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. The next matter is ZBA 2022-05, 8385 Marshall Street. In this, again, we have a request to continue from the permit holder. The last meeting that we had the permit holder present for was December 12th, 2023. The special permit was granted a long time ago. The conditions were to place a construction safety fence around the hole and dis repaired staircase, or fill in the hole, and to remove the tree overhanging the neighbor's property by January 9th, 2024. I went by this property today and I was pleased to see that there was a fence around it. Sir, are you here for that? Are you the permit holder? Please have a seat and if you can state your name and city of residence for the record.
Elias Gonzalez, 73, 76 Kendall Hill Road, Sterling, Mass.
Thank you, sir. So can you, we had two items that needed to be fulfilled by today. Can you tell us about those two items?
So we have a fence now all around, because we rented, we rented out and they say they have an issue just to go all around, but we pretty much did it like halfway. You'll probably see it if you stop today.
I did.
So I'm not sure if it does enough.
Tell me this, I noticed it was at the corners, the sections were kind of tied with rope instead of what I usually see, which is a, some kind of metal fastener or chain link.
So like I said, we rented out, they came and they installed and they have those heavy things on the bottom and that's one of those things pretty much is holding down.
Mm-hmm.
So they say it's not going nowhere, it's not going to move.
Okay. How about the tree?
The tree? So I went over there to cut the tree and the lady not let me to cut the tree because she says she wants somebody professional to cut the tree. So I, they come in this Sunday to cut it out, so, but she was okay with that.
So they're coming on Sunday?
On Sunday.
Okay. All right. Anything else do you, this project has been hanging for a long time. Can you tell us a little bit about what is, what are your plans?
So I'm hoping to start, like I said, in April. I, like I said, I got a couple estimates right now. So they told me they can't do anything after the weather is getting better, because right now the, the ground is frozen, they can't do anything too much right now. And then the drain, it has to be put in place too, so that's another issue. And then the drain, it has to be put in place too, so that's another issue.
So I'm just going to remind you that last year that you made the same statement, we couldn't do anything because of the weather. And then nothing happened anyway, the remainder of the year. So, and I will also tell you that if that fence had not been up or the hole filled in, I would have been looking to revoke this special permit today because it's a safety issue. So thank you for putting the fence up. Appreciate that. I am going to go to public questions. Is there any person here today who wishes to make a comment on this review? Seeing none. If any person online wishes to make a comment, please raise your hand. See none. I'm going to go to board members. Mr. Byrne, any comment or question on the permit holder?
Last month, when you were here in December, you promised this board that that tree would be removed from the next door's residence by that weekend. It wasn't done. What I'm led to believe is that you were going to have to hire somebody to bring in a crane to remove that tree? And that's going to be done on Sunday? That's double or triple time, on Sunday. Okay. I want it this way, or I'd like to recommend this. That if it's not done within seven days from this meeting, that we request a fine be imposed. Because this has been taking too long. It's destroying the roof next door. It's putting a hole in that person's roof. Not only is that person going to have to have the roof repaired, that person's also going to have to, you know, have the expense, have the expense of getting that roof fixed, so. The longer it stays, the more damage it's done. And his promise to the board was it was going to be done that weekend. Now, he should have never said it if he didn't mean it. So therefore, I'd like his word to mean something, so let's find him for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a lengthy conversation with the abutter this morning in terms of some of the things that we're talking about, the tree removal. And she indicated to me that things were moving in a positive direction between her and the applicant. She was a little apprehensive about having it removed in the timeframe that the applicant had stated because they weren't licensed. And she feels that the people that are coming out this weekend are licensed and removing it with a crane is an appropriate way to remove it because if you drag it, you're going to do a lot of damage to her building. So based on what she said to me in the comments, she said, I was pretty happy to hear that there was some good conversation between the applicant and the abutter. And that's about all I have to say. I also want to tell you that as a property owner on that street myself, I really appreciate the fact that you put a fence up because that was a danger, so thank you for doing that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Gallagher, do you know whether the abutter knew the company and had some confirmation from them that they were coming?
She did mention some names, but I didn't really go into it.
I don't need to know who they are, but she had had some contact independent.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Byrne?
He brought up the fence. He said the fence was going to be done. Like, he just says what he wants to say. We're not putting any feet to the fire here. He told us something and yet it wasn't done until today or yesterday, whatever.
It was, I think, done very recently.
Yeah.
The fence?
The fence was put up.
It was done like a week ago.
Yeah, about a week.
Couple, couple weeks, around the night, yep.
I don't know, it just seems that we sit here and we get talked to. There's no responsibility for what is told to us.
The, Mr. McLaughlin, comment on this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I also like people's word to mean something and I also feel that the deadlines that we impose must have meaning or they are meaningless. I believe the suggestion was that if the tree is not removed within seven days, that a fine be imposed for violation of condition.
Correct.
So if the tree is removed on Sunday as planned, there would be no fine recommendation. And if it's not, there would be a fine recommendation. And if there is some issue preventing removal on Sunday, the first thing I would do on Monday morning is go speak to the building department and explain why.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to look at the first date of allowance on this permit. Want to know that. And we've had so many reviews, it's a little unclear.
It's case 05. So it must have been maybe January?
In 2022.
Yeah. May I ask a question of the applicant?
Go right ahead while I'm looking at this.
Have you been part of the project or partial owner since the beginning when the application was made? Or have you recently become part owner or owner of the whole project?
Yeah, that's pretty much right now. I'm trying to be a part of the project right now, so that's that's why I'm saying I'm hoping like by April, I won't have a crew.
Get it to the finish line? Okay. Okay, but you are an owner now of it?
Yep. I'm the one, I've been the one pretty much all this time. It was just communication sometimes with the other people was, that was the issue.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So now I have to take care of that by myself. It will be done.
Okay. So this is my proposal for handling the current review. I agree.
Can I ask something?
Yes, briefly.
Do you guys have the plans with you right now or no? About the parking on the left side of the house? You don't have with you right now, right?
What's the question?
So the question is because, and the plan shows like we're going to have like a, you know, wall on the right, wall on the left and wall in the back. So the neighbor asked me like if we would not put that wall on the left side because that's pretty much his parking. So the reason I take that tree was right there down, it was just to leave all the space right up in between my parking and his parking. So I'm not sure if that can be possible just to wait the wall right there or I have to put the wall there.
So this is, one of the conditions is that you construct it in substantial accordance with the plan that we have. And for us to modify that, we would need to see a new plan. And I'm not sure that, I mean, that would be another expense on you, you know? And you would have to ask for the modification, submit the new plan so we could look at it and see what we were, we were considering before it could move forward. If you want to do that, I think you are obviously able to. But I don't think we can approve that or just, or review that at this meeting.
Review, okay.
Because we need, we need a plan.
Okay.
So. And where there were, there's concerns about, you know, the structural integrity of the substantial retaining wall that you're building. So one of the things we'd want to see is that it's still going to stand.
Okay.
Okay. As I said, two modifications. First, I agree with Mr. Burns that if there, if the tree is not down within seven days of today, so that is the 16th of January, that a fine for violation in the amount of $300 should be imposed. And again, that's a recommendation to the building commissioner. This permit, this special permit was first granted by a vote on November the 15th of 2022. We had some substantial back and forth about the site plan and the planning board and I know that took some time to resolve. My suggestion is that again, no certificate of occupancy shall issue until the zoning board of appeals has approved the completion of all conditions. And if this is not issued by November 15th, 2024. Yep. So that's November of this year. This special permit shall terminate. Okay. That's not anything unusual. There's usually a 24-month limit on special permits anyway. And then permit holder may schedule a review before the ZBA upon completion of all conditions. So that means it's up to you to complete the conditions correctly and fully. And then ask this board to review those and hold a vote on whether or not they have been completed before those two years is up. So before November the 15th of 2024. Just want to review the November meeting date. So the November meeting date is November the 12th. If you do work which is not compliant with the conditions, then the board would be asking you to remove and replace it. I don't want to keep dragging you back here. I want to make sure that the work gets done in accordance with the conditions. And that's what I would offer this time. So we would schedule the review meeting for November 12th of 2024. And the expect, if you sooner completed the conditions, you can ask for a sooner meeting.
Same, okay.
Okay. Does any, any comment on that proposal?
Just want to drive that nail home. Appreciate you kind of coming forth and getting involved because I don't believe you had been before us. So just want to help you get to the finish line. I'm sure you want to get to the finish line. You know, the retaining wall and replacing the one that's in the front that's falling down is pretty substantial. I'm not an engineer. I just, you know, word of wisdom. Talk to the building department, tell them, you know, show them what your conditions are and make sure that the first time around it gets done in accordance to what the building department requires and what an engineer would require instead of putting it up and then all of a sudden having to do some rework because it wasn't done properly. You know, just want to help you get there.
Thank you.
You know, and, and thank you for.
So that wall has to be removed completely, right? The one on the right side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have a copy of the decision?
I have from, yeah, from before, but I think this is, we changed the last meeting we did.
Yeah, it was the safety fence and the tree. So it's not just a piece of paper. It has all the conditions on there that we discussed. I'd suggest you certainly take a good look at it as you complete, as you begin construction to make sure your plan is, is moving as it's supposed to be. And if you do have a question on it, ask the building department.
I wouldn't.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion on those two modifications to the decision on this review?
I'll make that motion on ZBA 2022-05 for AG Dream Flip LLC for the property at 83 to 85 Marshall Street with the modified conditions and review.
And review date again of November 12th, 2024. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next matter is ZBA 2023-15, 348 Elm Street. This is a continuance of a special permit hearing, so this has not yet been granted to reinstate a vacant or abandoned non-conforming mixed-use structure, changing the use to another non-conforming, less detrimental use as a duplex. We are here because there was a condition imposed that demolition, that the building be demolished by December the 1st. At the December 12th review hearing, there was an additional condition imposed that the demo inspection was to be completed by January 9th. And I believe the permit holder is here remotely and has his hand raised. So sir, if you can speak, you're welcome to speak. And if you could start by saying your name and city of residence. Okay. You need to unmute yourself?
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go. Thank you, sir.
Wonderful, Nadella Antonio from 21th Street in Pittsburgh.
Okay. So can you give us an update, please? On the demolition specifically?
Yeah, we, I demoed everything that was falling apart, all the wood structure. Took advantage and demo as much as we can. And we did. Right now, whatever you see up for concrete walls is going to remain for when we start building. We're going to use those walls. There is a fence around it, there is still debris on the floor, concrete I haven't been able to pick up yet, but I'll be picking that up within a month or two.
Okay. Are you aware that there was an injury on the property?
I did not know.
So there was an injury that was reported to the building department by Pittsburgh Fire. They had a medical call due to an apparent trespasser being injured on the site.
I did not know that, no.
Okay. The interim commissioner did conduct an inspection on January 5th. He stated that although you're making progress towards demolition, it appears to still be ongoing. And again, he's concerned about the safety of the construction fencing, given that there was an injury on the property.
I'm guessing someone was a jump the fence or took the fence apart or something? I'm not really sure how someone got in there, it's not under surveillance.
I.
Will someone sleep in there, do you know?
I don't know. I've read directly to you all the, all the information I have. I'm just going to ask if we have any other city department communications on this? Okay. All right. Apologize for any feedback we seem to be getting today. We have held the expiration of any deadlines until we see you in July, sir. And I am very glad to see the demolition proceed because the building before what you've done to it was in a much worse condition as to safety. But if the intent is that it's going to stand in its current state with those, those concrete walls and I believe there's. Is the cellar open?
That is, the basement is open. The walls on the right and the walls in the back, that's going to be part of the, of the second floor whilst we build. So all the concrete that's there now, it's nice and sturdy, won't go nowhere. That's part of our construction and we can start building again.
Are you going to cap the basement so that it is not open? Let me put it another way. When are you going to cap the basement so that it is not open?
Well, I wasn't planning to do anything else until I start construction.
Okay. I am going to tell you right now, I don't find the condition satisfactory. It's a safety issue to have that be open and uncapped. I, the condition was to demolish, and you're saying you're not going to demolish the entire structure.
So what was falling off-
Leaving an open basement like that is, is not acceptable for the condition of this site while we are waiting for this to go forward. So I'll go back to you again later, but my question is going to be, when are you going to be capping the basement? I'm going to see if we have any public comment. Is anybody here to comment on this petition? Seeing none. Any person other than the permit holder? If you are here virtually and would like to comment on this petition, please raise your hand. I see none. Any comment from aboard Mr. Byrne?
I'd like to answer for the applicant. He's going to cap that tomorrow morning. That's when he's going to cap it.
I mean, when you cap it-
Close off access to it.
So having an open hole is not, is not acceptable.
Well, I mean, it's an open hole. It's same landing as the first level of the street. You know, so it's not like someone, if someone walks straight, they walk straight into the basement. They don't walk down into a basement. If you want me to cap it, I'll have to build, I'll have to build up that floor there. I have to build, I have to build it. I mean, the whole purpose of the fence is to protect from people walking in. That's what we did a fence for.
Agreed, but it is, it's not working. So-
I think, how is that my fault? I did, I did the fence. The, the whole purpose of this project was not me to start yet. And when we did our meeting, I told you guys, I'll do the fence, I'll demo the building, but I'm not ready, ready to start the project yet.
I agree, but you're not, you did not demo the building. You demoed a part of the building. That's what you did.
No, I demoed-
And that's fine.
Wait.
But that has resulted in this condition. I'm going to go to Mr. Gallagher and ask if Mr. Gallagher has any comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so that I'm clear, and this is to the applicant. Has your demolition been completed?
The demolition is completed. All the wood structure that was falling, it's demoed.
Okay, so your demolition, if I'm to understand this correctly, was just the wood structure. Does the cement that's currently still standing, does that stay and will that be incorporated into the building that is proposed?
That is correct. That's why it was not demoed on the section that it was.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking back at this, I think the immediate need was to get the unsafe structure down. The board has not approved any design. At this point, the board, I think, verbally verbalized they're in favor of the project. But the, I don't believe the applicant nor the board knows even if what remains meets code or is structurally safe or has met or will be needed for a design that the board will approve. So I think we're still pretty early on in this project. And I, you know, obviously there's some concern. I know the applicant made a comment about, you know, how can that be my fault? I put the fence up. The fences are made to be temporary during a construction period, but not a six, a year, an eighteen-month solution while they work on funding for, you know, the project. So just wanted to make those comments.
I'm also going to point out that the decision, condition three states that after the current structure is demolished, the foundation may remain but must be capped. So capping that foundation has been a condition since the beginning of, of the leeway that we've allowed. So, you know, to the applicant, I'm going to say, I very much appreciate the improvement because it is. It's an improvement from the state that this was in before the demolition occurred. But the capping needs to be done if this is going to sit. If you believe that the current structure is capped, you know, what I'm going to look to do is have the building commissioner verify that the foundation is properly capped. And if you want to have a discussion with him about whether it's sufficiently capped, I certainly leave that if there is some leeway to be had. But I, I don't, I'm not satisfied with leaving this open-ended.
No problem. I agree. I am, I think we should, I can meet there with the commissioner. If I do need to cap it, I mean, I have no problem with that. I just going to want to uphold the permit so we can, might as well do it right and do the actual floor, so I'm not doing the job twice. If I'm going to, I might as well do the floor for the above floor. That way, it's at least ready like that. I don't mind doing that at all.
Again, we haven't approved a project.
We haven't.
So I would hate to see the applicant spend good money or any money that has to be undone. So
That is true.
Interesting point with this project right now.
I thought the, it got started already with that zoning. Maybe not. So I can, I'll apply again for it if you want tomorrow and get this rolling.
You don't need a new application because your application has not yet been approved. It is pending. At the beginning of this process, you had filed the application, but there was no plan. There was, the plan for reconstruction, I think, was lacking. You had multiple projects going on and, you know, the resolution of that where the board was trying to give you some room and accomplish a needed goal, which is the demolition of that building, which was unsafe, was to allow all of the deadlines to, to go until July and to schedule the public hearing for July. That was agreement that was signed by both parties. But there were conditions on that. Demolition was one. Overgrowth to be maintained was another. And capping the foundation was a third. So I, I'm, I'm not really going to engage in more discussion of this because it's an existing condition. Really, the only thing I want to talk about is a deadline for that to be completed. I would love to see it tomorrow. I agree with Mr. Byrne on that, but I don't think that's practical.
Um, yeah, I don't think tomorrow, let's, I can go there, make a material list and see what I can do. You know? It'd be me at least some time to be able to do it.
And I believe a reason for us just kind of saying, let's get the demo done, was because eighty-three to eighty-five was a part of-
That's correct.
-the conversation. So, you know, I'm a little concerned that eighty-three to eighty-five has gone nowhere, and we're kind of sitting here at this point with something in another case.
So this is what I'm inclined to do or to suggest to the board that similarly to our other reviews and continuances, there's a scheduled date for this to begin hearing. And that is July, July ninth.
If I can move that to sooner, that way I can might as well, if I'm going to cap the foundation, like I said, I can just build that basement ceiling. And I don't mind moving forward that. I mean, I always had the prints. You have the prints there. I don't mind doing just one floor for now and moving on little by little. And that'll be great. I mean, even if I do that one floor and cap everything, then I can remove that fence then, right?
I, I don't think this says that. But I think capping is essential and it is required. So what I, Mr. Antonio, I think at this point in time, I'm going to make suggestion that what we do is modify condition three. It states after the current structure is demolished, the foundation may remain but must be capped. We're going to add to that, the foundation shall be capped by February ninth, which is one month. February ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Or removed.
Or the foundation removed. That's, either one would be fine.
Okay.
And that this be, this can be scheduled for review at the March meeting. But if we're going to schedule you for the March meeting, sir, you should have plans into us before the meeting so that we can review them.
If I'm not, we had plans from the beginning that I submitted the application. Park and plan, yeah. But I'll do it again.
Okay. And I'd be looking for the project to proceed, so. So let's have a the hearings, the next hearing continued to April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. With condition three being modified. Any discussion on those proposals before we go to motion? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion on this hearing?
Make a motion on ZBA two thousand and twenty-three dash fifteen for Nadella Antonio for the property at three forty-eight Elm Street with the condition and changes as discussed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Mr. Antonio, good luck capping the foundation, and we'll see you in April.
Yes, thank you. I'll, hopefully I do it sooner or later, and I'll have it done ASAP. I appreciate you guys' help. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Calling the next matter, ZBA twenty-three dash thirty-three, one eighteen to one twenty, Intervale Road. This is a continued request for a special permit to reinstate and change the use on a vacant or abandoned non-conforming three-family structure to a less detrimental non-conforming use as a two-family dwelling after a fire. Now, on this matter, there is an agreement to extend any deadlines through February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and thirty-five days thereafter. And did we have any contact from?
Yes, I gave you, okay, there.
There we go. Okay. So there was a request to continue the hearing until April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, with all deadlines extended thirty-five days thereafter?
I'm sorry, he asked for March. I put it April just-
Okay. Okay. So that the public hearing be continued until April with all deadlines to be extended to thirty-five days after April ninth. So is anyone here virtually for the applicant? And no one is present for the applicant? Okay, all right. Is anyone, because we have a public hearing open, is anyone here virtually who would like to speak on this matter? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Anyone present in person who would like to speak on this matter? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Okay. Board, any comments on a continuance until the March meeting date? All right. Then I'd be looking for a motion to agree to the mutual extension.
Madam Chair.
And reschedule, and continue the public hearing until March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Gallagher on the motion?
Before you go any further, I have a concern that I wanted to bring-
Very good.
-forward. I went there today, and although a lot of the building is secured with boards on the open windows, there's a breach in the fence which would allow someone to walk onto the property up into the area that they're proposing to be the deck, and the entire building is wide open.
Windows, doors?
It's a result of the fire where the building was actually, a portion of the building had been removed, demolished and removed. And the entire building is open. I would think that if the fence was secured to the building properly, it would eliminate some liability. So.
So we could consider, we could consider that in order for this public hearing to be continued, that the applicant is to secure the safety fence around the perimeter of the structure within, I think, seven days.
Okay.
Is that, especially if there's an existing fence that just needs to be secured?
Yeah, it looks like it would be a relatively easy fix. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks. Anything else before we go to motion?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Just that I hope that in the future, moving forward, that the city starts to take a better look at these burned-out abandoned buildings because this board has seen multiple buildings throughout the city that have sat not for weeks, not for months, but for years, wide open, and they are unsafe to the inhabitants of the city, and for some reason, we don't seem to address them. And in other communities, we see that when buildings have fires and they have substantial damage, within a week or two, these buildings are taken down. But in our city, they sit. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I agree that we see properties before us where I think the, the board would prefer that it be removed rather than rebuilt. And I agree that we should have a better process for A, that to occur, B, always more funding for it to occur, and at least to have a discussion at a city level about the viability of the property. So may I have a motion for a continuance until the March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four date with the condition that the, and acceptance of the mutual agreement for extension of time with the condition that the applicant be ordered to secure the fence surrounding the structure within seven days?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, that is continued until March the twelfth. That's you. Next meeting, the next public hearing is a continued application. This is ZBA twenty-three dash thirty-five, five thirteen Williams Road, Louis Rodriguez. This is the continuance of a hearing on a special permit to build a sixteen-by-twenty shed on the right-hand side of the house encroaching the side setback, leaving approximately ten feet from the property line pursuant to one eighty-one point four one six located in rural residential. Sir, welcome to our meeting.
Welcome.
Can you please state your name? I assume you are the applicant. Can you please state your name and address?
Hello, everyone. My name is Louis Rodriguez. I live in five thirteen Williams Road.
Very good. So what would you like to tell us about this application, sir?
I would like ten-feet variance, I believe. I'm sorry, I'm new to this terms. For a shed that we are building for storage, to put yard equipment, the kids' bikes, and you know, just to make sure the yard is, is neat. That's pretty much it.
Okay. So I'm going to note a couple things. This is an application for a special permit, not an application for a variance.
I'm sorry.
So there, it's an application for a special permit because this was presented as a pre-existing non-conforming house. In other words, that it already- In other words, that it already had some dimensional non-conformities. And you were asking to have this shed built as well. And I'm sure that you have seen the zoning ordinance, but in general, section one eighty-one point four-two-one says you can build any shed within three feet of a property line as long as it's a hundred and twenty square feet or less. And your shed is too big.
Yes, yes.
So what you're asking is that we reduce the required setback from the sideline? Just want to make sure I get the numbers right. So the setback from the sideline should be twenty-five feet and you're asking that it be ten?
Yes.
So this is what I wanted to kind of go through with you. Your structure was alleged to be non-conforming because it, non-conforming not meeting dimensional requirements because it has a hundred and fifty feet of frontage instead of the hundred and seventy-five that is required, which is fine.
Okay.
It's what happens. Stretchers get built and then we change the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And then we require something different. So to be pre-existing non-conforming means at the time it was built, it met the requirements. It just doesn't now. It doesn't mean we make you remove it.
Okay.
All right, so that's not where we're going.
Super nervous.
Yeah. In addition, if I'm looking at the house from the street, the left-hand side, I think, is too close to the lot line. So that's the other non-conformity. However, you own the lot next door.
Yes.
The lot next door is also a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Which means it's also a, it's a vacant, non-conforming lot. And what happens when you have two non-conforming lots that are situated right next to each other, owned by the same person? They merge for zoning purposes so that it's considered one lot, not two. Looking at this, I think this is what has happened to your property.
Okay.
Unless you can tell me, because I'm looking at the assessor's records and it says that you own both the lots.
Yes, it says two lots. I have two lots, yeah.
Yeah. So there's two kind of results of that. The one that's really in front of us is if you have three hundred feet of frontage, you're not really non-conforming because you have that whole lot.
Yeah.
Right? Which means you need to have a variance instead of a special permit. And the, in order to build your shed that close to the line and that big, okay? A variance is harder to get. It requires that we find that there is some issue with the shape of the lot, the soil, the topography, or an existing structure that creates a substantial hardship for you because asking for a variance is asking to break the rules. This is, these are criteria that are established by the state statute and so even in the local ordinance, there has to be one of those issues.
Okay.
And as I said, this is an application for a special permit, not a variance.
Special permit, okay.
Right? So those are the two issues. But beyond that, I just, I want to suggest to you, you have a big lot and this could go elsewhere. But also, if it were under a hundred and twenty square feet, and Mr. Byrne is reminding me that the ordinance says any portion of a rear yard, provided that there's setback no more than, at least three feet from the side or the rear lot line. So if you had a smaller shed, you wouldn't be here needing to ask for this permission. I'm going to suggest that that might be an easier resolution for you.
Is that really true? Because the shed, no matter what size it is, is still in the front yard.
It's still in the front yard.
And it's got to be put to the back. Okay.
Yeah. There's a garage on the property?
Yes.
Or that these things might be stored in the garage instead of in the shed? But, so this is a public hearing and I am presenting you with new information and so I want you to be able to respond to that. I have to ask for public comment and then we can discuss how you would like to handle this, okay?
So, okay, so you want me to make a smaller shed?
I'm saying that if you had a smaller shed and it wasn't in the front, you wouldn't need any permission from us.
Okay, yeah, but I don't have a smaller shed. I have the shed that is there now, so am I going to get the permission to leave the shed and property or?
We have to take a vote on that and to see whether you've met the, what the ordinance says you have to meet in order to do that.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah.
Madam Chair? It's a procedural thing I'd just like to point out.
Yes, go ahead.
The application says grant a special permit under MBL seventy-eight R dash fourteen dash zero. So I just want to make sure that procedurally, we're moving in the right direction. If we've accepted something that has something different, that's it. Just wanted to bring it up.
So I saw that. The numbers are the assessor's reference to the map lot and block. The advertisement for a special permit under section three-three-five, one eighty-one point three-three-five, so.
If you say we're okay.
Properly advertised.
I'm okay with that.
Right. Ma'am, would you like to say anything or ask any questions?
No, I'm going to be quiet.
Okay, right. Okay, so I'm going to go to public comment now. Is there anybody present here who would like to ask a question, make a comment or a statement on this application? So are you welcome to speak? Say your name and address.
Yeah, Ken Campbell, forty-five Williams Road. I'm abutting Luis's property.
Thank you for coming to the meeting. Please keep your comments concise and direct to the point.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, there's quite a bit of trees and brush between our two properties, so as far as I'm concerned, it's not affecting me. It's strictly what the city does with a shed that's in the front yard. There's a problem when I'm looking at the statute you were referencing. Can things be moved? Can things rather than be destroyed and rebuilt somewhere else? That's just a question.
It's up to what the applicant wants to do and where it would end up.
Yeah. My comment is not bothering me.
Okay. Are you the abutter that is closest to the shed on that side?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming to the meeting, sir. I'm going to look online. If anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand. So seeing none, I'm going to go to board member comment. Mr. Byrne, any comment or question for the petitioner?
No, I, we, Mike and I met Luis out on his property and he did this totally without any guidance or anything like this. He never came in for building permit or he probably heard that it was okay to do, so we went ahead and did it without any looking at the books. I'm sorry to say that the shed is in the front of the property and we've had many pages, many cases in front of us over the years that, no, we can't have them in front of the property. It has to be in the rear of the property. I don't think we've ever given permission for it to be in the front. Mike, you remember any? I don't either.
Not that I recall.
So all I can say is that he's got to be able to move it somehow. It's not attached to the ground. It's built off the ground. It's on blocks, so.
Mr. Gallagher, any comment?
A question for the applicant, Madam Chair. What is the current square footage of the shed? Do you know?
I know it's sixteen by twenty. I don't know exactly.
Sixteen by twenty, so.
It's that big because when we moved from the city, I noticed that everybody in the property has two, three sheds, so I didn't see the, you know, the thinking behind that. So I said, why don't you just build it bigger?
Big one.
So I went online and it said that as long as it's on bricks, you could build it without a permit. So that's what I found online.
Okay.
So I did. I went on YouTube and we started building the shed.
Right.
I mean, I'm not going to build something that big in front of my house or where it is, me thinking that I'm breaking the law because it's, you know, it will call everybody's attention. So I thought I was fine. And so, you know, the gentleman from the city came over and said that I had to get rid of it, that I had to stop all construction. And I also had some chickens that I saw online that I could have. So when he told me about my chickens and I also had to get rid of them, I did. You know, I just moved from the city and I had the chickens for the kids and trying to give them Dick's experience and building the shed for their kayaks and, you know, all these things. But, I mean, where the shed is, yes, it's in front of, it's in front of the house, but it's really to the side of the house. And it's just, my property is, the houses sit like towards the back, so I have a lot of property on the front and not enough in the back.
Yeah.
So I just.
I understand the logistics of what you were thinking. It's just that the shed is three hundred and twenty square feet, which exceeds significantly over the one-twenty.
I thought it was two hundred.
Sixteen by twenty, you said, correct?
One-twenty. Yeah, but I believe, I thought the regular sized shed is two hundred that you could build. That's what I was told afterwards, two hundred square feet.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty?
Yeah, hundred and twenty is the number.
I was told by somebody in the city that it was two hundred.
You know who that was?
I don't remember his name, no.
Got to send him back to school.
Yeah. No further questions, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
The advice that you get on the internet is generally worth what you've paid for it.
You know, I was wrong. I understand that, but.
I just, I, you know, so in the future, the building department is very willing to answer questions about this if you have anything. And so I'd always, you know, just give them a brief call and check in with them. What you got is kind of a mixed bag of advice because if it was a shed that was smaller than a hundred and twenty square feet and in the backyard, you'd be fine, so. Mr. McLaughlin?
I don't have any questions. I got to visit the site. I think more procedurally, I think, and I think Brian had asked me this question as well, this really is a variance, isn't it? And I know you were a little perplexed in the beginning when, as Christine was explaining. Maybe to try to summarize it, your lot that your house is on is undersized by today's standards. So if I was going to build a house in your district, the lot would need to be bigger.
Okay.
Your lot is smaller. I'm a visual guy, so I'm going to kind of do this.
I get it, okay.
What the laws kind of say is if you have a small lot and a small lot and you own them and they are connected.
Yeah, they.
They become one.
Okay.
So you have another lot, but it's not a buildable lot.
Okay.
Right? The two small ones are supposed to try to help you meet the zoning urge. Hence the comment that she made. So you probably learned something tonight about.
Yeah, no, yes, definitely, because that was one of, our goal in the future was to build a house next to our house.
Yeah.
So this is a comment that I have from looking at this. If you do intend to build on that lot, I would go seek formal legal advice, have somebody look back at the title, see if maybe there's some exception
Okay.
that you would need.
Yeah, that would have been.
Because we're not going to determine that formally today. We're not going to.
Yeah.
I don't think that would be in any way fair.
Yeah, no, 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 thank you.
So, but I do agree that we would need to be looking at a variance in order to consider this today, so there's a procedural issue. And if you wanted to ask for a variance, again, those four strange things, soil, shape of the lot, topography, or existing structure, that has to create a hardship and that has to be in existence before we can consider granting the variance to allow you to build a bigger shed too close to the lot line in the front of the house, so. I'm also going to say, unless the building commissioner is going to disagree with me, that you could build three or four sheds in the backyard if you wished, as long as they were a hundred and twenty square feet or less and didn't cover more than twenty-five percent of your total yard. You know, you can't have a village out there. But you can have multiple smaller sheds. You just can't have a larger shed that close and in the front yard. Go ahead, so I'm sure I misstated something.
No, 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 I actually completely agree with what you just said. I just walked into this in the middle. Just so you know, I'm Felix Azemal. I'm the acting building commissioner for the city. So I am very sympathetic to what you're going through.
Yeah.
And again, excuse me that I walked in the middle. I was meeting in the city hall before. But, so I don't know what the board has said already, but you do have another option instead of going the variance route of if you're able to find a way to lift the shed and move it so that it meets the setbacks or rebuild it so that it meets the setbacks, move it somewhere else in your yard so that it, so that it's, so that it's, what is it? Since you're rural residential, it's at least twenty-five feet from the side and fifty feet from the back. Then you just get a building permit to do the foundation. We can inspect it and you can have that if it's over a hundred and twenty square feet. But because the rule is over a hundred and twenty square feet, it just has to meet those setback requirements. And then you don't even have to go in front of this board for any relief.
So move the shed is my only option.
That's another option, that you could move the shed somewhere else in your yard that meets these setback requirements.
It can be in the front yard?
It cannot be where, it can be where it is.
It can't be ahead of it in front of the house.
Correct.
Ahead of the house, between the house and the street.
Correct, but otherwise, as long as it meets the setback requirements and it's not in front of the house.
So I can move it towards the left some, next to the house more?
Actually, as long as it's at least twenty-five feet from the property line. It says.
Away from the street.
Says accessory structures. No, 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 I'm going under the accessory structures rule. It says sheds are allowed, are allowed accessory structure. And then the dimensional table says sheds, sheds, similar portions not exceeding a hundred and twenty square feet can be located in any portion of a rear yard, provided that they're setback. But that's only for the hundred and twenty square feet. Then it says tool sheds, patios, gardens, small-scale ground-mounted solar, similar structures greater than a hundred and twenty square feet must comply with the Table of Use Regulations. So as long as you're the twenty-five feet from the side yard, I don't see anything that, that limits you.
Yeah, but they're still in the front yard.
Well, technically, reading the language, and the board can interpret it differently. But what the language says is the front yard exception only applies if it's a hundred and twenty square feet or less. If it's over a hundred and twenty square feet, it's a whole separate, it's a whole separate sentence that says that it just has to meet the table for all the setbacks. It doesn't limit you from the front yard.
So I think we have to vote on the petition before us.
But he may be, if he wants to move it, he may.
So I could be in the front yard?
In withdrawing his petition potentially.
He might be.
If, if he wants to.
No, it can't be in the front yard.
Well, where does.
You just said it could.
Where does it say that it can't be in the front yard?
We have, they have so many sheds in the front yard. That's what we're trying to.
You know, like when you drive down the street, there's multiple houses that have the sheds.
And they have like three or four sheds right in the front of the house.
It might not be the same side.
So that, if they're under a hundred and twenty square feet, that is not allowed. That is a violation. But if it's over a hundred and twenty square feet, which yours is, then it just says you have to meet the setbacks. It doesn't say it has to be in a rear yard. The rear yard is only for the smaller sheds.
Okay. So then that's what we're asking for, for the ten feet, so we could leave the shed where it is.
But it has to be twenty-five feet from the side yard. It has to be forty feet from the front. It has to be fifty feet from the rear.
So it will meet the, it would meet the front, the front.
So you have to meet all of those requirements.
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to.
Yeah, but if we move it forward, it'll be on the driveway. You know, and it's kind of, I understand that it's big, but.
Yeah, so if you're able to move it into your backyard somewhere and meet that twenty-five foot.
It's just woods. It's just, it's just, and, and that's not enough space.
That's where the leach.
Leach field is on the left.
Yeah, that's where our, our septic is.
And it's just baffling because, you know, it's like.
Yeah, no, you don't want to put it on your, anywhere near your.
The pool is in the back where, which we don't, you know, it's a pool in the backyard of the house.
Just wanted to throw another, another option.
I really appreciate it, but it's like, you know.
And then there's the leach field. And then there's the house.
And you can't build on, on top of the leaching field.
No.
That actually has other requirements and you'd have to.
Yeah, we don't want to build on that. It's all mushy and.
Well, hopefully it's not that mushy. Hopefully it's nice and green.
You know, I.
You're not supposed to do that. That's what she's saying.
So the options before you are to ask for leave to withdraw this petition and explore what was just discussed, which again is something that doesn't need relief from the board if the building commissioner finds that it's allowable. You can ask us for a decision on this and just to know that if there's a vote no on this, that there's a two-year bar on reconsideration. So, which is why the, the requesting that you withdraw the petition is better than a negative vote. Or you can ask that we continue it to present new evidence that the special permit should be allowed.
I mean, there's no new evidence. I mean.
Or to consider, you know, you've again received a lot of information tonight to consider what you would like to do.
I mean, I mean, could I weigh in on something? One piece, if you do the continuance, it gives you, if you ask them for a continuance for new, for new evidence, it gives you the opportunity to talk to a lawyer and see if a lawyer can come up with some way, something to present as well. It gives you, it gives you the time to try to figure out answers to the board's questions.
Okay.
Or if I may, bring your plot plan to the building department and discuss some options that are legal.
Yeah.
Or I should say, yeah, allowed by right is the proper. And then with the continuance, it would leave you the option to be able to discuss with the building department some options and then make a decision to say, I've found an alternative method or come back to the board and then we can proceed.
Because if you are able to find something that works for you that doesn't need, you know, this board's approval, then you can just say, cancel the hearing and I won't come back. So. Up to you. What do you think you'd like to do, sir?
I think we should extend.
Yeah, because at least, I think we should extend it because then at least we'll be able to go to them. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Is, is there any way to get this book, like, is it a book that only the board could have? Or is it like a book that we can actually purchase and like learn?
It's online. It's PDF online.
All you need to do.
I went online and look where I'm at.
Go to Pittsburgh zoning ordinance.
Yes. Just don't go to Pittsburgh, Wisconsin.
Well, you know what? I know what we're going to do. We're going to, when we get to you guys upstairs, we're going to say, hey, can you guys help us out getting the book?
My email's on, on the website.
Okay.
Show me an email. I'll email you a link.
Yeah, that, that would be better. Thank you so much.
No problem.
That way we, you know, we're new to the, you know, to this area. I mean, it's, it, we've been here for a while, but, you know, coming from, from Chelsea and then here. And I understood earlier about the house on fire because in Chelsea, there's been two houses that caught fire and they had to tear it like completely down right away.
Yeah, it been down.
We want, we were wondering why. Now we know why.
It been down for over twelve years, the lot empty.
Yeah.
But there's no house or anything, just the front stairs.
Yeah.
Which is another reason, but.
You'll find that fire is a huge safety issue that the city is concerned about improving. It's one of, one of our issues that we try to make sure gets done right.
We want to learn and, you know, we want to follow the rules.
We, you know.
She wants to join the board.
She wants, she wants to join the board. We do have two vacancies.
There are two openings on this board.
Yes. So, and whoever joins the board is going to need to spend some time reading that book.
Well, I got to wait. I got to wait. I'm on, I'm, I'm, I'm still studying for my masters right now, so.
We're still learning too.
Business management.
So just so you know, in the future, on the mayor's portion of the website, that's a, there's a form that you fill out if you have any interest in joining a board because there are many boards and commissions in town. And you're welcome to do that and fill it out and ask the, the mayor for an appointment or to have a meeting to discuss what you'd like to do. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
In your free time.
In your much free time. So how many do we have on for March at this point in time?
For March?
We're not full at all, right?
No, not from March. It's only like that. We only have like a four.
Okay. So I'm going to suggest that what we do is have a continuance to the March meeting, which is March twelfth, always the second Tuesday in the month. And that will give you two months to kind of figure out what the path is that you want to take with us and we won't make a decision in the meantime.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to make a meeting with you guys? With them or with us?
With you guys.
Just send me an email. We'll, and I'll set something up.
Very perfect. Yes, please.
I'm in, I'm in the city on Tuesdays and Fridays.
Tuesdays and Fridays. Thank you.
Thirty-five for our continuance for the property at five thirteen Williams Road until March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Before we take a vote on that motion, we have an extension. So we have certain deadlines that come up. So this is just an extension that there's going to be no deadlines that come up in the meantime. So it's going to be for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, plus, plus thirty-five days. So there's no deadline that would arise before that time period. And I'm going to ask if you're willing to sign the extension agreement to approach and sign the extension agreement, sir. I got it right in, five thirteen Williams Road.
Just says we all agree to extend it to the next meeting. There's no interest rate. Yet.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And on that motion, do we have a second?
Zach, Brian did.
I did.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matter stands continued until March twelfth. I hope you all have an excellent evening. Thank you. Right. Calling the next matter, which is ZBA twenty-three dash thirty-seven. This is one sixty-seven Canton Street. This is a request for a special permit under section one eighty-one point three-three of the City of Pittsburgh Code to build a three-family townhouse style to replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure with the same use post-fire pursuant to section one eighty-one point nine-four located in Residential C, District Map one forty-one, Block forty-five, Lot zero. Welcome.
Good evening.
Sir, your name and your city of residence.
Paulo Kaitis, seventy-one River Street, Lomisur.
Okay, so you're the applicant?
Yes, I'm the owner.
Very good.
Me and my wife, she just couldn't come because of the kids, so.
That's understandable.
I mean, I could have bring the kids, but it would be a mess.
It would be entertaining, but would probably not help us finish the meeting. I was at the city council meeting last week and there was a dog. And that was certainly a delay because everybody wanted to pet the dog. At any rate, on the matter before us. So this is a property that had a fire. That's correct?
Another one of those, right?
Okay. And another fire, yeah. What was the date of the fire?
Not completely sure. I got the report from the fire department. I believe it was March twenty-nine.
Of what year?
Two thousand twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay. So there's been not quite two years, but almost two years since the date of the fire, right?
Right.
Okay. All right. And what was the use of the property before the fire?
It was a three-family, as I found out. I believe it was you that messaged through the system and asking when I called, I believe it was the assessor's office to find out what it was before, what two thousand six or two thousand seven. They even gave me a hard time because what you wanted to know, it's what you have now. But I believe it was a two-family before that.
It was a two-family before that?
Yeah, but we're talking about more than fifteen years ago.
More than fifteen years. Okay. So that was me and it was not my intention to give you a hard time. It's just one of the questions we have to ask.
I was all new to this.
Yeah.
It wasn't Felix, the.
No, that was me.
Building inspector at the time. I was talking to Barbadoro. And even before I bought the property, I came to town, I talked. And I heard from building, it was a two-family. Tax collector says it's a three-family. It's been, so I said, what's the best option? At the time, he said, if you try to do it as a two, you might not have to go to the whole ZBA because it takes time.
Yep.
So I applied then with him, but you got to do a form of intent at first. But I did, and he comes back to me and says, you still have to go to the ZBA. So we still have to take the whole time through this process. And he put it in there saying that it's a three-family, not a two. I wasn't sure if it was a two or three. I was just going to do a two, but since I have a three and I've waited, I mean, maybe for the town, a three-family might not be the best option. But on my point of view, as, you know, I own a couple of properties in town, I rent them. And a three-family makes more sense to me. So I said, I'm going to proceed as a three, a three-family. And I came up with the project, but I have a deadline apparently with the town because after two years of the fire, I have to go back to the existing zoning.
Right. So you were not the owner at the time the fire occurred?
No, I just bought it maybe six months ago.
Okay. So the information that you have is on, on what it is, is coming from the records or from the prior owner or things like that?
Right. I mean, I got, they advertised when I bought it as a three-family also. In the town, when I got the first form of intent, he was saying that, it was stated that it's a three-family.
It's a three-family.
So I'll still have to change for a two-family one way or the other.
Okay. And, and so what you want to do now is build a three-family in a different configuration. And you haven't been the owner for very long. Do you know what the original configuration was it? Two on the first floor and one on the second? Was there a basement unit? Do you know what it was?
I was told it's a basement window, um, unit, I'm sorry. I've been to the basement. It's not a unit.
Okay.
It's not a unit down there. So they must have something different type of setup there for a three-family. Basement hasn't been a unit.
Okay.
Because the only access to the basement on that building is a bulkhead in the back.
Okay. The building commissioner has a comment or a question?
So we went, I was partially involved with this and kind of helped him figure out what kind of there, what kind of special apartment he's looking for, for this. We met at the office, what, like three weeks ago or so, and you showed me the plans.
A little bit more because deadline was December eleven for this meeting, so, yeah.
So we reviewed the records and there are health code violations showing that it's a three-family dating back multiple years. So we know it was a three-family because our, our city records showed that this was at some point a three-family to the point where the, the health department had gone out and cited them on violations. So that's how we were able to determine that, yes, this was a three-family at some point. From what it looked like from the health department files, it was a basement apartment, first floor, second floor. But I never went out there myself. That's just what, what the health department records appeared to show. And that's how we determined it was a three-family. And where he's within the, within the two-year period, he's looking to, he showed me the site plan that his, that his, I don't remember if it was a surveyor or a PE drew up that showed that the setbacks from what he's proposing versus what is existing. He's improving the setbacks dramatically from the existing on this. And he's still doing the three-family. So that's why I suggested special permit for, for this using, after, after catastrophe.
Yeah, so that is, I believe, one eighty-one point three-three-seven. I was looking at it today. Not that I have the book memorized. I do not. Three-three-seven. And so the general gist of this is that you were, if you were going to just rebuild the exact same structure, you didn't need to come to the board as long as the setbacks are at least five feet. And the reconfiguration, because there are differences, I think, in the setbacks is what has led you here. But with a design that I, I think is a vast improvement over the existing building. I am concerned that the building has remained kind of in its state for so long. You've been the owner for about six months?
I've been, like, the day after I purchased, I went to build an apartment, tried to see. I mean, I don't want to touch it yet. I know it's a safety concern. I've learned on this meeting here since I've been here, but I do want to do something. But at first, when I talked to the previous commissioner, I said, what if I get a demo permit? I was like, I'll give you a demo permit, but you lose your rights because right now, building existing, it's a three-family. If you don't have a special permit to rebuild or if you're not going to apply for a permit and have a permit in hands in order to, as soon as it's demo, you can build it, you might not get what you have because now the building is gone. And I understand that, it makes sense to me. But it also makes sense to make the improvement and not keep it at the same location. Because it's just, it's right front of the street and I have a fire hydrant, like, right there too. The drive, I barely have any driveway. The land itself, it's just going down. I mean, as soon as you, if you're on the sidewalk of the street, it just keeps going down by, I don't know, 16, 18 feet. I will have to do great improvement and fill in order to make the land somewhat livable for the tenants that are gonna be there. Because you just have a front door to come in and out, but they can't use the yard.
So, have you boarded up all the windows and doors that can be used as an entryway?
Think they've been boarded up since the fire. I have a hard time going in there, actually, myself.
And there's a very large dumpster next door. How long's that been there?
167 Canton.
I'd say a couple of months. I'm doing another project. The homeowner, actually, has been living in the house, I've been doing an addition. And the winter was coming and he's like, "Can you find a way to not to have the dumpster here? We're doing a project because they need to park and if snow comes in, they wouldn't be able to park." So, I said, "Well, I have a house down the street and that's what I've been doing. I've been doing the work and bringing the trash there." Why, I don't bother him. That way, he's happy too with my work.
Am I right in thinking that the gist of this is that someone in Lemonster asked you to move the dumpster to Fitchburg?
No, it's in Fitchburg.
But where, what, where did you move it from?
Old Deerfield Road, 44. I'm doing the job there, so that's...
In Lunenburg?
No, in Fitchburg.
Oh, in Fitchburg, okay.
It's not too far from the job that I'm working, it's not like...
I thought you were telling us you moved a dumpster from another town into our town.
It's not too far from the site.
I was gonna say, that's not, that's definitely not what we would want to see. All right.
I would also be going in the opposite direction because the disposal is actually in Lammerser. So, I would bring the trash here and then go back to Lammerser after the fact, so...
It's better, that's a better process. So, what, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms are gonna be in each of these units?
I believe three and, three bedrooms, three baths?
Three bedrooms, three baths.
Maybe three and... I actually... Three bedrooms, three baths.
And how many square feet is each unit?
I believe a little over 1,500. Without all this, I'm sorry. I mean, I submit the plans, but...
You did. So, you had John Caravolis as a professional engineer to draw these plans for you. Has he been to the site in person or has somebody from his office been?
He has. He's sent someone because we've done a soil test. So, he had one of his guys on site. Why not have somebody, you know, dig a hole and see what the type of soil that's in there? So, he did a soil test.
And do you plan to own, continue to own all three units and rent them out? Or is this gonna be a condo conversion?
No, I, I'm gonna keep it. I don't own any three-families, this is my first, so... All my others are two-families.
All right. What is, is this gonna be, this is gonna be a complete tear-down, remove the foundation, everything but basically the utility stub from the street? Do you have a construction company lined up for this project?
I'm a builder.
You're a builder, okay. So, you're gonna build this and you have a crew?
Right.
Okay. Do you have either funds or financing in place sufficient to meet the needs of the project?
I do have it and it's all pending on this. So, as soon as it's already started, it's almost ready to go. But they can't submit any approvals until I actually have the plans that said it's approval to build.
Have you reviewed any issues created by the stretch energy code as far as insulation to make sure you're in compliance? And know what the costs of building are gonna be?
I know. I actually do a spray foam, so...
One of the things that happens if we, is we have people come in, they don't properly assess the costs of the building and then they can't complete the project because they haven't planned properly for it. I mean, there's always things that happen during the building process to change things. I'm trying to ask questions around whether you're prepared to build the project as you've presented to us. How long is it gonna take and do you have the resources available and lined up to do that?
I'd say this year. I want it completely before the snow comes to the, of the next, you know, the end of the year, the next snow comes to the ground, I want to have it ready.
How many parking spaces?
Eight parking spaces.
Eight parking spaces.
The, no, I'm sorry.
Six.
Six, right.
Six is required.
Six is required.
Six are required.
Yeah, because there's, when I looked at it, it's 25 feet from the street. The house is at, the minimum setback is 30. And then, so I couldn't do tenant parking and even if I do, it wouldn't count. So, I have six parking spots.
Okay. I have some questions for the building commissioner, but is there anything else you'd like to add on this request?
I believe also, so it's a special permit and a variance, correct? Because of the shape of the lot?
No, that's a variance issue.
That's a variance, right? That's also here, correct?
Yeah. That's a relief that you would get here, but you have an application for a special permit.
Oh, okay.
That's why the application process needs to be fixed. But the thing that we've talked about, which is rebuilding after a fire, is under special permit.
So, he doesn't need any permits.
Or rebuilding after demo. All right. So, I'm just gonna ask the building commissioner, there was a statement from you that there were improved setbacks with the proposed plan. Could you talk about that?
Yep. And also, while we were speaking, I looked through our Open Gov. And there's actually a flag on this property that says the third unit was added in 2006 without a permit. And we have records saying that, also multiple records saying that there was the third unit there. And following the rule of 10 years, no violations, no citing for that unit, it doesn't give it non-conformity.
It gives it protection from enforcement.
Exactly. So, that's where my interpretation of reconstruction after, after... So, when I talked about the improved setbacks, and I apologize, I borrowed your coffee. But on the site plan that is included, he shows the existing building and the new project. And so, the existing building, if you look for the front setback, it's, the front setback on the existing building is much, much, much closer to the street than the proposed building. So, that's where I said it's improved setbacks because he's proposing other than the decks. And if we have them as uncovered decks, then they're actually compliant. Other than the decks, the back, the rear yard, I believe, most of them, let me just firm the table. I believe other than that back corner, he's meeting the rear setback requirements, he's meeting the front setback requirements, the front yard setback, and he's meeting the side yard setback requirements. So, the only setback that he's not meeting is the rear in that one corner versus the entire front for the old, old building. So, that's what I said, it's better because they're more compliant. It's more setback from the street and...
Okay, thank you. Was there six parking spaces in the old building? I didn't think that there were.
In the old building?
No.
Yeah.
I don't believe so.
I think there's more parking spaces now.
Yes.
Am I right in understanding, sir, that there's, there would be difficulty moving the building over to the left because of the topography of the land?
Towards the left...
If I'm looking, if I'm facing the front of the building, if it were moved over to the left, the land is more difficult to build on over there?
It is. And also, I did point out that that's unitile power lines. Try to stay as much further away as possible. If there is ever a problem, they need to fix something, they can go with trucks in there and, you know, do whatever needs to be done. And my house will still be far away if you ever falls or something happens. So, I try to go as much towards the right side as possible. And also, it only didn't comply with the setbacks because of the shape of the lot on that side. It's not like a rectangle shape, it's, yeah.
I'm gonna note that the decks in the back do exceed the rear. They are violative of the rear yard setback. But looking at the way that the land slopes down, I don't think it would be possible to build a patio or something on the ground in the back, which would not be an issue.
Deck is also my second egress.
What about the 181.4213?
Associated uncovered decks and freestanding decks. So, that was, we had freestanding.
No, but uncovered decks is separated as its own distinct. So, if it's an uncovered deck, it can be, it can be six foot.
I have always looked at that provision where it says associated uncovered decks to be decks associating with the swimming pools. That precedes it. Otherwise, it would just be accessory decks or attached decks or some other provision. But this is a good item for clarification of our zoning ordinance, what the intent is on that, so... There's no one else here present. I'm looking to see if we have any public comment. And I'm going to go to online. If anyone online would like to speak on this petition, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'm going to go to board members for questions or comments. Mr. Byrne, you first as always.
The project is going to be beautiful for the neighborhood. So much better than what's standing there now. But like you said, the topography of that land is unbelievable. Have you figured out how many tons of bill you're going to need for that area?
No, no idea. I still have to come up with a plan for retaining wall. That way, I can somewhat level in steps.
But the plans look absolutely beautiful for the neighborhood and... Looks good to me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Gallagher, questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And this is to the applicant first. You had mentioned having a soil test done. Can you tell me the reason why you were having that?
I actually, I believe you mentioned something just to make sure the conditions of where we're gonna put the place. It would be, the soil would, maybe if there was water or something, some type of, you wouldn't be able to put the property in there.
So, you're looking to see where the groundwater is? Is that the reason?
Just to try to see, right.
Yeah.
Because the way the land, the way the lot is and the street itself, I mean, that whole street, everyone's houses, it's sloped it down in one side of the street, but the one, I don't know the name of the street in the back. I've been there a couple of times, but I looked, they all like gave them down, make like a U shape. And then every time it rains, but it's not like it's wet land, but all this water just sits there from the streets. It's sloped into those lots and it just goes there and sits. But I mean, I don't know what I have, so that's why we did a soil test, just to make sure.
See what, see if it was clay or whatever. I had thought that maybe you were looking to do a perk test, which leads me to my next question. Is there city sorage that you plan on hooking into with the proposed structure?
City sewer?
Yeah. What is your sorage plan is what I'm asking.
That would be the requirement for the town. So, if the town, if they, I'm assuming that there is sewer on the street.
Right.
It would be connected to it. But if the town requires me to do three sep, I mean, two more because I already have one, it is what it is, it's what the town would require. I'm up for that as long as, you know, I get this done.
Usually, when I hear, you know, soil test, it tells me that you're looking to do a perk, which leads me to think that maybe you're looking to do a septic and that's just...
No.
Okay.
It wouldn't be the case. I don't even think I have enough room there.
Yeah. Yeah. On a positive note, I think it's a vast improvement to the area, improving the setback and, you know, having it sit, having the house sit proportionally on the lot compared to what you currently have. My only concern with this is your topography. The grade is quite steep and I think that's gonna take a lot of creative work to be able to use that yard efficiently for tenants, so...
I just happen to be, like I said, I'm a builder. Funniest thing, we're doing a supermarket building in Havro. And we found ledge there. But I mean, it's just the depth of it, I do foundation. So, from the ground up, I can build the whole house.
Right.
And we're doing the foundation and it's 12 feet down. Just in materials, good clay that we have removed from that side, just threw it away. It must have been at least 160 trucks loaded, yeah. You know, each truck was at like 20, 25 tons. And I'm like, I could've used all this at my site, but...
Yeah.
The time will come.
Shoulda, coulda, wouldas, I guess. Well, good luck to you, I have no further questions. I think it's a good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McGlathlin, questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nice, nice project. Just looking at it from like a longevity standpoint and I'm a visual guy, right? So, you know, there are gonna be a butters all around and stuff. Is your intention on the rear decks to do, you know, more of the engineered materials than just this big tall pressure-treated thing? Because I just look, in five years, you're gonna be looking at these three gray structures on the back versus...
Right, from the back.
You know, the long-term benefits. That's my question there. And I guess the drawing that you presented is really nice. You know, it shows some kind of stone facade and plantings and islands. Is all that, are we accepting this plan as submitted?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm assuming not the cobblestone...
She did a great job, she...
I'm assuming not the cobblestone driveway, right? That's kind of...
No, you'd be asshole.
But appreciate you taking this project on. You know, it's pretty big. You know, I went up and down the neighborhood twice, mostly single-family, two-family. You know, pretty, pretty nice neighborhood. know, pretty, pretty nice neighborhood. So, I think this is really gonna, you know, be a good addition.
Aside from all you said, I would only add one thing to that street. I don't know if this would be the right department. Also to take in consideration is the fact that, um, you should have a speed bump because cars go flying on that street.
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, that's not our view.
South Street gets clogged, water street, so that's the getaway right in between and they go flying.
Yeah.
One of the neighbors mentioned that, um, his house almost got hit. The guy came like flying like 70 miles an hour, hit a telephone pole, another one down the street. It's, it's just that when you're there, you, you're gonna walk on the street, just, you gotta make sure, cause they come flying on that street.
Yeah, that's the men in blue. They're the ones that can fix that, but again...
A speed bump would go a long way.
Yeah, yeah. I think, like you said, the only thing I'd like to see is maybe just make sure that that, those rear decks get done, you know?
I do have a plan, like I said, to make a retaining wall. So, it would be like steps to the back of one increase, so you have like, maybe like 12 feet, like a little flat areas, they can, you know, play here and stuff and then another wall, cause it's, it's too much materials. I, I can't even do a, a big wall on that back just to level up that whole lot. I can do it in steps.
Again, I'm just looking at like decks, steps, railings and all that, that's all.
Right, yeah.
But, um, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
So, your construction timeline is by December of this year?
If everything goes smooth, I believe I still have to get an approval from the planning board.
Have you submitted a, a request for site plan approval to them yet?
I did send an email, it's at Chantel, I believe that's her name. She, she said, it, it didn't really make sense for me to apply because I don't have the approval from you guys first. So, once I get this, I still have to go, I don't know when, when's gonna be her next meeting, when I'm gonna be on that meeting to have her see this and give me the approval. So, I mean, we still in the beginning of the year, it's only January. If this drags me too far, maybe, I don't know, maybe May, I might not have it done by then, but if it goes a little quicker, then, yeah, for sure. I just don't know on there and how long it will take.
All right.
Plus, with building department also to issue me a permit.
That's good. Okay, so, uh, I think we've reached the point unless you have, unless the board has any other questions for the applicant, um, or if you have anything more you wanna add, that we're gonna close the public hearing and move to deliberation, okay? Anything else?
I think I'm good.
So, without objection, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I'd welcome any comment from the board on favorable or not favorable on this application. You all hate it, obviously, no. No. I, I, I think that, um, in general, the board members have expressed that, you know, they're in favor of granting the application.
Yes.
I've been trying to note some suggestions on conditions for this. Um, I have kind of two phases where have conditions concerned. The first is during construction and as we start the project. So, dumpster not to be overfilled and emptied regularly, site kept clean of trash, construction debris and overgrowth during construction. And then, my other concern is construction vehicles, cause it's a fairly small street. So, to the extent feasible, um, all construction vehicles shall be parked off-street and shall not interfere with the flow of traffic during the construction.
Might slow things down, though.
It might, yeah, I was gonna say that.
It's my late-night humor, so.
The next thing is, uh, the security of the building as it exists. And, so again, I don't want there to be a safety issue with the, the building. And that's gonna involve making sure that the building is secure until demolished. So, that would involve boarding up, um, anything that was left unboarded.
Okay.
So, that may be easy, but...
I'll double-check. I mean, my last time was there, I think it was boarded, but it was done by whoever the, they called, the fire department called for that at the time.
So, boarding of all entrances and open sing, openings in the existing structure until demolition?
Some of the second-floor windows are definitely open.
Okay, yeah, cause you can see through, that's, it's just...
Yeah.
Trying to find a safe way to go up there and put a board, but...
And I'm thinking that a time, a, a fair timeline on that is probably 30 days, given the weather. Additionally, to be constructed substantially according to the plans by John Caravola stated 11/29/2023 and submitted here with. So, in other words, in order to deviate from the plan, you'd need a modification of the permit. No more than three dwelling units and no more than three bedrooms per unit. It's a density issue.
Does that include this, the page, the front page?
It does.
That we're kind of accepting, cause that's very, very nice, with the islands and the...
Any concerns on the amount of bathrooms?
Uh, I don't think I am going to put a condition in about bathrooms. The concern is that we don't want the structure to be overburdened by people, more people occupying it than is projected by the number of bedrooms.
Right, I only have two parking spots too, so...
Yeah, and, and that's why it would overload the property and then it would get to be a congestion issue with the street. The next condition, um, what was the next condition? You've derailed my train of thought.
Sorry.
We can go to a commercial if you want.
It would be not, welcome right now, I need a brain to reset, it's 9:23.
We'll be right back, mates.
He is, must be in a good mood.
While we're taking a break, do you know that there are people who faithfully watch this zoning board?
Oh, yes, I follow.
They come in and tell me all the time, hey, soil y'all are zoning board.
Yeah.
So, to all the zonies out there, hi.
Now, we're gonna go to an Ozempa commercial.
Oh, gosh, this, this is why we need to keep our meetings shorter. All right, so, I, I wanted to put it in a condition that no additional dimensional relief is granted beyond the depiction in the plan. So, in other words...
Plan is submitted?
Not making any big of it.
Plan is submitted, so. And then, finally, um, I, I want there to be a review, but I think this is a, a low priority review for the board. And so, this is what I'd like to do. That we have a condition holding the certificate of occupancy from issuing until the zoning board of appeals has approved, all conditions have been met, um, of the special permit. And further, um, that the special permit would expire and terminate if all conditions have not been approved by the ZBA within 24 months of the date of the vote, so two years.
Two years from, from this date?
From this date, from this date. And finally, that the applicant may schedule a review before the board by request and representation that all conditions have been met. The consequence of this is that if you build something without our review and you build it wrong, we would have the ability and would follow through with making you remove it and rebuild it. So, for instance, if you built a fourth bedroom in any of the units, we would make you remove it before you would get a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Okay? So, if you need clarification on anything, go talk to the building department and they will be happy to talk to you.
Okay. The only thing that, like I asked you was the amount of bathrooms, cause, I don't know, for some reason, I like to have every bedroom have its own bathroom. So, I have three upstairs, we did, um, one in the masses and the other one to be shared. But, it was just, maybe I'll do a modification there, just to, each, each bedroom has its own bathroom, but then downstairs, we'd have to have a half-bath, just because if they are inside the bedrooms, then if there's a gas or someone needs to use a bathroom, then half-bath, we wouldn't be a full-size bathroom, but from three, we'd go maybe to a three-and-a-half.
So, in order to, um, approve a con, a, a modification like that, we would need to see a plan on it, because we, we approve things that we can see and, and feel. There's no specific condition on the number of bathrooms, but there is a condition that you build substantially in accordance with the plan that you gave us. So, you've already, you know, outlined what you're gonna do.
Okay.
If you wanna do something different, then you would come back to us for approval of a modification, okay?
If I change my mind, I mean, I'm pretty happy with this, but if I decided when I'm building, like, no, this, this bedroom, I'm gonna put another bathroom, and they're all gonna have their own bathroom up here, um, can I do while doing construction or have to stop what I'm doing, wait for the meeting to come here, see if I get it approved and then continue, I can continue? But, if you say no, then I'll have to remove it. I understand that part, but I don't have to stop, correct? You wouldn't be starting all over again?
It, it wouldn't be a starting all over, it would be a request for a modification.
Okay.
So, we have, uh, you have a building permit that is issued according to the plans that you give the building department, that is separate from the special permit. And the course of construction is controlled by the building department, not the zoning board. How you proceed along that, whether you need to stop work, when you need an inspection, that's their purview. But, if you have changed the plan and, uh, not sought approval from the board for a, a change in the plan, or, or violated a condition, um, then I think you are likely to get a stop-work order until there's, um, until it's been fixed or you've gotten permission for the change. That's why if you're gonna make a change, it's best to ask permission and not forgiveness, so.
I don't wanna delay either, because...
Nobody wants to delay, um, you know, we don't want the project to be delayed, honestly.
No, it's just me with my...
But, it's the, it's the process that we have, that's how our government runs.
Okay.
The final condition would be, any conditions opposed by the planning board through site plan approval to be incorporated as a condition of the special permit? Does anyone have any additional conditions or suggestions or comments on the conditions that I went through?
No, just that, um, for all decks and porches, engineered products are, um, recommended versus pressure-treated.
Would you...
That's if the boards...
Yeah.
...am I a part of that?
So, the condition would be, all exterior decks shall be comprised of engineered building materials?
Versus pressure-treated.
Rather than pressure-treated?
The structure itself, it's pressure-treated, but the flooring, the railings, the post, PVC.
Except, except for the structural elements.
Yeah.
You won't see the pressure-treated, you will all be covered, but that's, that's a structure part of it, so the flooring will cover that.
Rapid.
The railing would be PVC, yeah, that's, that's what I have in mind too, I wasn't planning on...
Yeah.
On pressure-treated, but...
No, it, it's such a lovely project, it would be a shame to mar that.
Two years later, you look at it and it's all faded away, it's...
Exactly. All right, so, if there are no further, uh, conditions or comments, I am gonna ask for a motion on this application with a proposed, uh, review date set in January of 2025.
I'll make the motion to accept the plan as submitted with the conditions stated by the chair, with the review as stated by the chair.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Passes, so you have been granted the special permit. A written decision will issue, that has to be filed with the city clerk's office, and then an appeal period of 20 days needs to go by until it becomes final and then, um, you know, you can proceed with the special permit allowed. You also, of course, need to go to the planning board, um, but you're welcome to report to the planning board that the special permit has been granted, um, by vote tonight.
Okay. Try to see that going as quick as I can. It doesn't look like that for too long, even for me.
Yep, and definitely, you know, get the, get the property boarded up, cause there is a 30-day condition on that, so.
Okay.
All right, good luck with the project. We look forward to the improvement.
Thank you, Carol.
All right, have a good evening.
I had to go for, I don't know.
Next, we'll just gotta get you to move to Pittsburgh, so...
Who knows, maybe?
Never know.
He was nervous coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
I agree, that would be, that would be an improvement, I agree. Right now...
That's all right, we had it.
Yeah.
We would've showed it to you too.
Thank you, have a good evening. All right, so we have two final matters. Um, one has to be taken care of tonight and that is the election of officers for the coming year. Would anyone like to run for chair of the board?
Like to run for...
We're quite happy with who we have.
I dominate.
Christine Tree. Nobody raised their hands.
All right.
Moving on.
So, we have one nomination of myself, do we have a second?
Move nominations, reclosed.
All right, uh, all those in favor of reappointing me as the chair?
Aye.
Aye. I would abstain if Jim's there.
You sounded like somebody's twisting your arm.
No, 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 no. So, um, I nominate Michael McLaughlin to serve as vice chair of the ZBA again for the coming year.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I gotta, I nominate Mr. Joe Byrne.
To serve as clerk. I will second that nomination. Any other nominations? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Uh, the officers are elected for the coming year.
Can we nominate a building commissioner?
You can, but this pa, board has no power to appoint one.
Paying attention. Thank you for coming. My pleasure.
Thanks for coming.
You'd wanna nominate me even after I, even after I said some of the things I said today? Your input is valuable, invaluable. Thank you very much. We all learn every day and we appreciate you taking the time.
We hold you to stay.
The final, um, item is revision of the rules and regulations, and so we've gone through this a few times. And what you have gotten this time is actual written wording. And the revisions are in section three. We, we keep putting it off. I, I prefer that we move it forward.
Oh, I just said, do we have a copy of it tonight?
Oh, sorry. That said we wanted to put it off.
Okay, then I have it.
Okay.
So section three, Christine?
Section three. This is the proposal, that it says that either the applicant or permit holder, so there's just a little language addition there, may appear on his or her own behalf or be represented by an agent or attorney. In the absence of any appearance without due cause on behalf of an applicant, the board may decide on the matter using the information it has otherwise received that is existing. The addition is applicants and permit holders should expect that the board will move to decision using the information received if there are two or more absences without due cause by the applicant or permit holder. So the change is just to put people on notice that they just cannot continue to have absences without communication or without really due cause. The next modification is section five, and this is a deadline for submissions of anything beyond the initial application materials. Any initial plan, document, or information material to the application must be submitted to the board on or before 2:00 PM on the Thursday before the scheduled hearing in order to have the board consider the additional submission at the scheduled hearing. We have had an issue with plans being handed to us at the hearing, it's not the appropriate way to review them, and therefore if, if the applicant does do that, there's going to be a continuance to the next hearing date at a minimum. The next, the next section, section six, makes the same change if, in the, in the case of a brief, if we, if we ever do get a brief, must be submitted by 2:00 PM on Thursday before the meeting. The next change, I am going to page seven, section four. This is about reapplications or repetitive petitions. So the change is that we refer to the state statute on repetitive petitions, which is ACL Chapter 48, Section 16. And further, just to clarify, only once both boards have voted to allow a rehearing or reaplication, may the petitioner reapply to the Board of Appeals in the normal manner.
Could you take us through the steps in that process?
Sure. So if we have a petition that we have taken negative action on, a negative vote within the prior two years, there can't be a reaplication on the same application unless that application substantially alters the conditions of the petition. The example we just had before us was 133 Cedar Street.
Right.
So in order to consider a new application, we would, within two years, we would need to find that it was substantially, the conditions were substantially different than when the original decision was made. And then if we decided that, the planning board would also have to give its consent for rehearing.
Is there an order?
Both boards would need to reach a decision, so they would issue a written decision.
Okay. What's changing?
What's changing is clarification that you can't submit the new application in the meantime. This has to happen before the new application can be submitted, and that's just to be consistent with the state statute.
Okay, so in the past, was the planning board not making, not looking at it? Was it just coming to the ZBA?
I think there was confusion between the boards as to what the procedure should be.
Okay. Is the state statute that it needs to go before both boards?
Yes.
So what if one board votes yes and one board votes no?
Doesn't carry.
Can't be reheared.
Yeah, doesn't carry.
We're, then we're subject to the two-year bar.
Okay, okay. So it's kind of a check and a balance.
Mm-hmm.
Wants to go before two boards before it comes, before the reaplication.
Yeah.
Is made.
That's, and that's the intent of the state statute.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
No problem. Next section, section five, is about extensions for commencement of work under a variance beyond the original one year. And that is to do two things, to refer to the state statute and say we must be compliant And then confirming that we can set an expiration date for a special permit variance or use variance if such permits, and that is all permits necessary for the prosecution of the work, are not obtained or construction is not commenced within the time specified. So we had an Etonian Parkway variance expiration.
Yep.
And what this does is clarifies what are our grounds for considering work commenced under the variance. And that's going to be the obtaining of the permits and the commencement of construction. Finally, section seven on page nine is the one that we all are concerned about. So this is addressing the issue of having numerous reviews, as tonight we had six. And the thought by the board that while we want to continue to have reviews and we want to be able to recall people for reviews, we may not need to have as many reviews continuously as we have done because it hasn't produced the results that we were looking for. And I'm just going to say that I've had a conversation with our building commissioner who has reminded me that the reviews are valuable, that we are, that they are not frequently done by other boards, and it's a valuable service, so he doesn't want to see the reviews go away, just be managed better. So what I've looked at is designating cases as either high review or low review, high priority or low priority. There are some cases where we're going to want to continue reviews closely so we can manage a particular problem that's going on. But I think many of them, we just want to make sure they're completed and that the conditions are complied with, and those would be the low priority reviews.
Question?
Yes.
Or comment?
Yeah.
We see, I think we've, we've, you know, warped into this, you know, review board because, can, just simply put, conditions aren't being met. And I'm optimistic, right? We need to try to find a better way because we're, we've all been, you know, really struggling with some of these cases going on for years. But I, I think the board has also noticed that we give a list of conditions to applicants and they just don't, I don't know if they don't look at them or what. Also want to be fearful of people coming into us and saying that they, you know, they've done a bunch of things and like you had said earlier, be mindful that we can ask you to undo a bunch of things. Want to somehow try to prevent that from happening. And I don't, I don't know the answer. I mean, is, after, after a decision has been rendered and signed, does it make any sense to provide a copy to the applicant, have them read it and sign the fact that they've received it and understand it? You know, I don't procedurally know from town to town, but where's, you know, we've really, somebody's sat down and we've gone through it with them or is this?
You're 100% Mike right, Mike. But if they don't sit here and we tell them exactly what's supposed to be done during this meeting, and they don't follow it, I mean, they're not going to follow it just because it's written down and given to them.
Yeah, yeah, just.
But the conditions are given to them because once it's recorded, we mail every consult, every review.
Oh, we get it, chief? All right.
Every review we got done, we record it and mail it to them. They also have to record it through the registry or deed, so they have to have a go from one city hall to the other office.
Right. Some people, I think, have issues with noncompliance because they don't want to comply with the conditions.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything we can do to help them.
You know, like Elm Street today, I don't think the applicant understands that, you know, all the things that we've discussed, I don't want to talk about the case because we're closed, but just an example in general, I'm just fearful of somebody spending money that they don't need to, you know, I don't want.
It's not a result that I want to have, but our, our, I've begun to think of our, bringing people back for review every month, every two months, I've begun to think of it as we're attempting, you know, like hovering parents over them.
Yeah, I think we all agree, yeah.
So that's not, it's just not working.
Yeah.
But these are, these are the options that, that we had come up with. Some of them we put into place tonight, which was we set a 24-month termination date or a six, 12 or 18-month termination date for a variance unless the conditions have been approved. And then we schedule a review date that month or the month before.
Right, yeah.
Okay? And allow them to ask for a sooner review and, and then reiterate that we can call them back at any time if we choose.
Yeah.
Okay?
You know, unfortunately, I've seen a lot change with the board over the years. Years ago, not too long ago, the majority of the applicants had an attorney. Now we're seeing very, very few applicants have an attorney, and as you know, we're seeing a lot of, you know, like myself, when I went to ZBA meetings back before I was on the board, you don't understand the language, right? And it can be very complex, and even today, we still all have questions, so, you know, it's an interesting dynamic. Things have changed, and I think a lot of it is resource. There used to be a lot of attorneys in the general area that practiced zoning and, you know.
Even lawyers have questions, right?
Don't see a lot of them.
Mercedes is right, even lawyers have questions.
Yeah, they do.
If the law were black and white, you know, we probably wouldn't have as many lawyers as we do.
You don't need a white guy.
So that is, that is one option. That is one option. Another option that's been suggested by the building commissioner was to create a subcommittee for review hearings, for the approval of reviews. This would mean that we would have at least three of our members on a subcommittee, which would hold additional meetings simply on reviews. We would have less time spent on our regular meetings, but the people on the subcommittee would be more meeting, have more meetings.
Dominate, Mike.
It's, yes. It's, it's difficult for us, I think, to contemplate that right now where we're down two members and, and we just, we can't have anybody be missing, and it's a, it's a big time commitment.
On that subcommittee that you are talking, like, you know, so it would be like three board members, building inspector or building commissioner participating?
Well, it would be three board members that would need to be there. We could certainly get, get other, if other city departments are willing to send a representative, that would be wonderful.
I think it's something that.
And it's a great idea. So I, but I think until we get those other two positions filled, which will hopefully be soon, I, I think that's, might be beyond the, the resources of our current board members right now. But I, I think it's a great idea to get those reviews processed.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
With this review board, with it, you mentioned three members, wouldn't they have to be a quorum for that or no?
So a subcommittee can have a lesser number.
Okay.
What we might need to do honestly is, is take in and have the subcommittee report and then have that report accepted by the board in a quorum vote.
Okay. So that's what the quorum is?
That's how.
It would be like, like a minutes taken as well?
Yes.
Just asking, it's something new I need to.
Oh, yes, because that would be, that would be an additional obligation on Mercedes for the minutes, so it's another meeting for Mercedes to attend. That's something that would have to be obviously discussed, so.
So the two options that I, out of the ones that we discussed, the two options that I kind of presented to the chair were the subcommittee idea or the idea, since special permits are usually two years, do a review at 23 months, so a month before, and that the applicant always has the right because, because Madam Chair said, we really, we want the applicants to take charge of this, we don't want to be babysitting the applicants necessarily, but we also want to hold them responsible. So if we just wait for the applicants to do it all along, there's a gaping hole because within our department, it can slip through the cracks. Permits could be issued, or occupancy could be issued, it could slip through the cracks. But if we have a standing, a standing review at 23 months and the applicant can ask for one sooner, that, that leaves the applicant in charge, but the board still maintains its rights and it's still, it eliminates the ability for a project to slip through the cracks as much.
It eventually will come back before us because it's on the schedule.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So, but, but the mechanism there is that we hold the occupancy permit until satisfaction.
Correct.
So. Any comments from the board?
What?
Lock them up, it's a little, it's not going to slip out without.
Exactly. Exactly. Still not being.
I'm not a board member, but I do have a question.
Oh, yes.
I don't know if I'm allowed, but.
Absolutely.
And that doesn't have to have Mercedes do extra meetings and board members do extra meetings.
Well, you know, I always ask questions, like, you know, and I have a, the question on the, what, page eight, under section six, about in-law apartments?
Yeah, this was an existing.
Yeah, that was existing, but my, maybe it is not, well, we still have a, I believe on the RB, it still need a special permit, like, you know, but it's like really kind of like limited because it's not a lot, but it would be this, like, you know, good to incorporate it, like, you know, to when, when people ask for a, this for the building commissioner probably is more, more like, when people apply for a, for, because we still take a form of intent when people wants to apply or want to have a in-law apartment.
Right.
So it's like, you know, some of this language will be good to incorporate it on the.
It would actually, so some of this language should be eliminated because it's, it's reflective of the ordinance.
Like the five years should be eliminated, but it would be good to keep it, like, you know, it cannot be sold or conveyed, conveyed as a tool, like, you know, after the, no longer needed.
Yes, I think that one would be, would be good to keep because that conversion is an issue that readdresses.
So it would be good to keep with the regulation, but it would be good to add into the form of intent approval or the letter, or the zoning determination letter.
The letter of.
Like a proven that is allowed by right, because it's not coming here, but it will be stated on the determination letter for the applicant.
As long as it's a condition that's. that's imposed by the ordinance and not a discretionary condition, then, then yes, I think that's a good suggestion for the zoning determination letter. On these.
Commissioner, they're ignoring.
So, in that paragraph, the conditions that we should eliminate are the five-year expiration and the accessory apartment to be occupied by a relative that's no longer in the ordinance. So, those two, I think, should be, should be removed.
So, could you go over? I actually did space out when Mercedes was explaining hers. So, what was that suggestion?
So, since this, these rules were first issued, the zoning ordinance has changed in accessory, accessory dwelling units, accessory apartments specifically can sometimes be, proceed by right, and they don't need a special permit anymore. And so, she was saying some of these conditions would still apply, but the applicant doesn't see them. So, we should take and put these into the zoning determination letter if it's allowed by right. All right. So, on page nine, I had put a couple of options in the second to the last paragraph, depending on which way we went. And I think, what I hear is that we're inclined right now to have a scheduled date a little far out, but not schedule like special review meetings and not yet reestablish a subcommittee for reviews, which I think we might discuss again in the future.
Correct.
So, we would leave, of that second paragraph from the bottom, it would, it would read, "Low priority reviews shall be designated in all other review cases. Low priority reviews should be, shall be scheduled within two years after the date a special permit is granted and within one year after the date a variance or use variance is granted." We would eliminate the next sentence because that would be about having review meetings specifically. And then we, we state that the chairperson may schedule a low priority review during any, not other, any regular or special meeting if the same is deemed appropriate. And then.
So, we're going to have a model. We'll also be able to, based on the case, decide whether we consider this high and we're going to have more reviews or less reviews.
Or less reviews.
Give us the flexibility.
We still retain the discretion to have it go through the regular review process. So, I'm going to add, "Low priority reviews shall contain a provision."
Might get out early tonight. It's only 9:59.
You know, there should be a sentence before both of these things stating that we have the right to call them back at any time because you're three months into something and we've seen conditions that need to be done, and they haven't even started on the conditions yet. We got to call them back in because if we give them a year to get all this stuff done, a lot of it's going to slip, I think. I don't know.
Well, that's kind of what we're deciding between.
They can't get their, they can't get their occupancy permit until we have signed off on it. And all the conditions have to be met at that time. But if we don't see them getting accomplished over a lengthy period of time, we should call them in prior. So, we should have a stipulation or a statement in there stating that the chair has the right to call in any permit holder.
So, the chair shall have the right to recall any special permit or variance holder for review.
At any time prior to.
At any time.
Prior to the issuance. Prior to the issuance of the, because we lose, we lose total control once they get the occupation, occupancy permit.
Not with all. Some of them, they have continuing conditions. So, we can simply say at any time and leave it at that.
So, it'd be the board?
We can have it be the board or the chair. If we have it be the chair, there's, we don't have to do it at a meeting.
So, during our visitations and follow-ups to projects, that'll give us the flexibility. If, if a board member sees something, we can just reach out to the chair and for potential recall?
Yes.
Okay. Versus having to bring it up at a meeting and go through the process.
And wait for our schedule to do that.
I like that flexibility. Because we probably need to be nimble if, you know, we see the conditions going in a different direction than were written by the board.
So, the sentence that shall be the second paragraph, inserted as the second paragraph under section seven is, "The chair shall have the right to recall any special permit or variance holder at any time for review by the board." And then, just completing that second paragraph from the bottom, we're going to add a sentence that says, "Low priority reviews shall contain a provision terminating the special permit or variance within a time certain." So, I'm not going to say how much, just a time certain. "If the board has not found that all conditions have been satisfied."
Okay, makes sense.
So, that is the revisions. This is not, you know, a full rewrite and reorganization, which is probably due to be done. It's tweaking some issues. Is there any comment or objection to any of the changes that have been proposed?
No. No, there hasn't been any changes in years. So, you know, and then in our free time, we can do a full rewrite.
In our free time, we can do that. So, then I'd like to hear a motion on the approval of the rules and regulations of the ZBA as revised.
I'll make that motion for the board tonight to approve the changes to the ZBA's rules and regulations as discussed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? The changes pass. So, we will have some time to work through the reviews in the system, but I look forward to some improvements in the review system before us.
Motion to adjourn at 10:04.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. We are concluded. To all my board members and our interim board, building commissioner and members of the public, I hope you have a good and safe night.
Night to you, zonies.